Yes.
Okay. Apparently not. Okay.
Marie, we can hear you.
Okay, Taylor, what am I doing?
We can hear you.
Okay. Hey, Bob. Good seeing you. Okay.
We can hear you.
You can hear me, but I can't hear you. No, it shouldn't be it. It should be. It'd blast me out. Okay, what am I doing wrong? Okay. Start your video, okay? That's okay.
All right, so let's test your speaker.
Okay. Oh shit, you can hear that, can't you? Okay.
So you can hear that?
I can hear that. Anybody else hear that?
Yep, okay, they can hear you now.
I hope not, because I blasted my ears out. Sorry, guys, I'm late. Thank you, Karen. I'll wait for you to get back. We'll give Karen a second to get back. All right, everybody can hear me, right?
Yes.
Okay, we're good. Okay, all right, we're gonna start the meeting for June 7th at 6:03. So I apologize for being a couple of minutes late here. Thank you, Karen, for helping me out on this.
No problem.
So I'm gonna call it to order. Okay, I need roll calls and locations.
Okay, How?
I am at my township office.
Miss Whistler?
Here, town conference room.
Almarigi?
Office in East Lansing, Michigan.
Benzie?
I'm at my home in East Lansing, Michigan.
Fuenz Bliss?
Here at my home in Bath Township.
Rosecrance?
Joe's basement, Joe's house, Bath Township.
Still in the basement.
And absent is Clerk Butler Chalender.
And taking her place is?
April Dunham, Deputy Clerk.
Thank you, April. All right, where's Taylor? Okay, Taylor, you can give us for our description of modification by communication?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, once we get to the option for public comment, if you would like to make a public comment when that is called for, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine if you are phoning in, or you can turn on your camera and raise your physical hand, or use the Zoom raise hand function. You will then be addressed by either your screen name or the last three digits of your phone number, and you will be asked to unmute. If you're dialing in, you can unmute by dialing star six.
Okay, any questions? Good job, Taylor, thank you. Civil reflection, our pledge of allegiance is going to be stated tonight by trustee Joe Benzie? Or, oh, there you are, Joe.
"I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
And we'll have a moment of silence. All right, thank you, Joe, greatly appreciated. All right, we have the approval of the agenda. I do have a question, so before, has anybody? Okay. We can approve the agenda, but I do have a question. So, okay, Ryan, go ahead.
Well, do you want to ask your question first?
Yes, but that's up to you, it's up to whoever. My question is, do I need to, if I have a question about the minutes, should I wait until the minutes, or because that's on the agenda? And also, the agenda also needs to be changed. In other words, we don't have a treasure report, and we don't have a committee report on the agenda. So my question is, or my motion would be, to change the agenda by adding the treasure report after the approval of vouchers, which actually would be 11. And if there are committee reports, that actually would be 13. So I'm not sure what's the correct procedure for that, so I'm assuming that would be my motion.
Is there a treasure report and a committee report to be given tonight?
Well, even if there isn't, it still should be on the agenda, it would say none, which is what we've done before. So I was looking at it, and I was going by our rules. And our rules state that that's listed. If we don't have one, then it's none. Okay, I'm assuming in order for a motion, you need a second, and understanding that what a second does, it only allows you to debate it. So it really doesn't mean a whole lot, so. The silence.
Treasure had his hand up.
Okay, where is it? All right, treasure Whistler.
I was asked earlier in the week, as same as I am every week, if we have, if we have anything for the treasurer's report this week, being it's the first Monday of June, no, we don't.
Okay, so it's none.
Um, but above and beyond that, is my understanding as a board member that we turn the agenda over to the superintendent who writes the agenda.
That's correct.
It's all your board rules, you have supposedly, which I read an email today that we don't have any board rules.
Oh, well, that's interesting.
So we're playing some sort of a, of a, something here that I'm unaware of. I was asked earlier in the week for the other board members that if we had a treasurer's report this week, we don't. The only thing we ever done in the way of a treasurer's report where it was on the agenda every week is when we did vouchers, they came under the treasurer's report. That's the way it used to be before they become part of the consent agenda years ago. That's the only thing I remember about. We talked about that early on with the inception of this township board. But since this board has been put in place, we've went back and forth, and I might add, you have been in the center point of this, as far as who's writing the agenda and how the agenda is gonna get written.
I appreciate that, but yes, we do have rules, and it's called Bath Charter Township Board Meeting Rules of Order. And in that root of order, 5.3, it states the regular board meeting order of business. And then it lists the order of business. So that's the only thing I'm going on. So anybody else have any comments? Oh, and by the way, that's page three, yes? Trustee Bliss, go ahead. Feedwind Bliss, sorry.
If we're just adding it back in to simply say there's no rapport for the act of doing that, I can support that. It seems like an exercise in futility, but I can support that. But I also have a proposed amendment to the agenda.
Okay. Um, all right, hang on. That's the treasure report, so you would support just adding the treasure report, which says none, and committee reports, which would say none, because that's what our rules state, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it changes fundamentally what we're gonna do or talk about, but if, if, if that's what we need forward, I can, I can support that.
Okay. All right, now. Do I have a second on that? If not, we'll go on to his amendment, so. Okay, you can leave it as is, but, oh, go ahead, Joe.
Ryan wanted to add something to the agenda, I don't really mind.
Oh, okay, so we have two items to add to the agenda, correct?
I don't know what Ryan hasn't said yet.
Yes, he did. He said he wanted to add it to the agenda. So there's two additions, so we'll take one at a time. Trustee Bliss, go ahead.
Mine is actually a subtraction, not an addition.
Well, it's changing the agenda.
Right. Uh, I'm proposing that we take off the DDA appointments. I think we've already taken action on that. I think we've made it clear that we're, we're not interested in appointing people that we're going to dissolve them.
You didn't vote on it, therefore it left it null and void, so it can be brought up until you finally vote on it.
Yeah, I'm not arguing the issue, I'm just proposing we remove it from the agenda.
And I'm saying that in order to remove that from the agenda, you have to vote on it.
No, that's not true. I'm proposing a change to the agenda, that we remove the item from the agenda.
Okay, all right. So trustee Feedwind Bliss is making an amendment to the agenda. He wants to remove the committee appointments. A second. Discussion? My discussion would be that that's an error, and it's an error because it doesn't mean that we made any action. There is no action taken. They will be continued to be brought up until there's finally an action, and that means that you need to vote on it, either vote it up or vote it down. So until there's a vote. So that's my discussion. So you want to take a vote on it?
Clarify if these are being voted on as one, or if they're separate?
That's entirely up to the committee. I, for one, would like to see it as one. They, of course, can break it down if they want, but the point is, they have to vote.
I want to be clear, I'm proposing we remove it from the agenda, not that we vote on these people right now.
That's correct. You are, and I made my statement saying that. I objected to that because, and I explained why.
Yeah, I'm obfuscating what you're saying, Marie. I'm just making it clear that it doesn't matter whether we're voting in a block or individually. The proposal is to remove it from the agenda.
Yes, and I'm explaining to you, you remove it, this is what you're doing, so.
I'm well aware, I'm speaking to Karen here, so to clarify to her.
Okay, so there's, there's no vote. Okay, so we'll remove it from the agenda, correct? Hang on.
You have to vote on the motion, please.
Yes. That's what I said. Are we going to vote on that motion?
The motion from Ryan Fuenz Bliss is to remove
the appointments.
Agenda item 11A from the agenda. There's a second by trustee Rosecrance, and our deputy clerk started the roll call.
Almarigi?
Yes.
Benzie?
Yes.
Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
How?
No.
Rosecrance?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Okay. Now trustee Benzie, you had another addition to the agenda, or some change?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. As amended?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, trustee Benzie has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Can you just, well, hang on, just hang on one second, clerk. Is there any discussion?
Question?
No, go ahead, go ahead, trustee.
Can you put the microphone or have her move closer to it, because we can't hear when she calls our name?
That's a good point, because I loud and clear, Chris. I appreciate that, because I had to ask her twice.
Almarigi?
There you go.
Yes.
Benzie?
Joe? Yeah, it's me, yes.
Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
How?
No.
Rosecrance?
Yes.
Whistler?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's going to put us then, and by the way, that was, that would have been five to one, because our clerk is gone, so. Five, yep, okay. So it passes. All right, now that's, after Joe made that, that's gonna put us in unfinished business. Okay, you're saying that's 12. Okay, unfinished business, A is in Adam. Items for introduction and discussion, update.
On the agenda, I have, there's, approve the minutes, and we have approval of vouchers. Okay.
We should be at disclosure of conflict of interest.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm still working, we're working off the agenda. Glad somebody's keeping track. So we approved it as amended. Hang on, guys, I'll get it, as amended for the agenda. Disclosure of conflict, you're correct, thank you, Karen. Is there any disclosure of conflict?
Ryan has.
Ryan? Yes, yes, I see trustee Feedwind Bliss. Uh, you have a conflict of interest?
I do, on the agenda, items for action B, A, A and D repair expansion. Uh, my family has a personal relationship with Eric Goodno, the applicant, that won't affect my voting, but need to make it clear for the record.
That's appreciated. Thank you. Now, I guess with the conflict of interest, I'm assuming that everyone thinks this is okay? That he's announced that trustee Feedwind Bliss stated that he has a relationship that he knows of, Mr. Goodno, so is that being accepted? If you.
I think as long as he doesn't have a financial interest, I think it's allowed.
Well, if that's what our definition of conflict of interest, then that's, that's good, but thank you for at least letting us know that. All right, I think we're at six, which would be public statements.
If anyone would like to make a public statement at this time, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine, by raising your physical hand if your video is turned on, or by using the raise hand function on the Zoom app. Um, and Elzenheimer, you can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I sent an email out to the trustees, but I wanted to read it so that all of the township knows what I sent them. Um, I am very disappointed in the Bath Board of Trustees handling of the DDA. I do not believe dissolving the DDA is in the best interest of the community. I believe the board, board needs to put their differences aside and work with supervisor Marie Howe to get the DDA on track. If this takes a leap of faith from the board, then do so. I'm really disappointed. I can't. Last week, I was so disappointed in all of you, and I want you to know that, thank you.
Okay, um, Bob Howe? You are unmuted, you can go ahead.
I'm Bob Howe, I live at 6461 Highland Ridge Drive. I am no relation to your supervisor. I grew up in Bath, went to the school all 13 years, moved away, had a career, and have come back to the condos at Timber Ridge. By way of experience that relates to the present situation, I was appointed by the Ingham County Commissioners to the Ingham County EDC for a six-year term. Two of those years, I served as chair. I have served 13 years as, as a member of the board of the DDA in Leslie, as I own several properties there. I wanted to express just a couple of things. I've just watched from the sidelines the discussion about the DDA, and there are so many misunderstandings about it, at least what I see from social media and what I have read in the limited amount of discussion that has occurred by your township board. A DDA, what helps one helps the entire area. And so often, people want to know what is in it for them on a particular project, but as you're developing a community, the community as a whole, as the schools get better, business gets better, as business gets better, the schools get better, as roads are better, all of those things work interchangeably. And so what, what helps one of us helps all of us. Um, so I have been part of successful DDAs in economic development, and know it comes in increments. I also know that there are nine people who put their hand up to be part of the DDA in Bath Township. I read those resumes over, and it's a nice selection of people. I know none of them personally, but what I can see is a cross-section of the community. And from that, uh, the philosophy I had as a school superintendent and as a business person was that all of us are smarter than any one of us. And you have willing community members willing to give this a shot. It's not been a DDA for a year and a half, at least, uh, for a lot of reasons that you all know. I would just encourage you to table your motion or vote it down for now and give these willing citizens the opportunity to work on the community as a whole, and because I firmly believe that all of us are smarter than any one of us.
Okay, um, Chris Hagerman? You are unmuted, you can go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Chris Hagerman, 12812 Webster Road in Bath. Um, speaking on behalf of the DDA as a adjunct, former member, member, whatever you want to call it. Um, I'd served on it for about six months before this sort of deteriorated. What I'd like to do is, uh, I'm reading a statement. The other current member, Nicole Gabrielle, has researched and has typed up. Um, she cannot be here because she is, uh, volunteering on another project that, uh, way more important than this, uh, so I'll just, I'll just start with this. Uh, Recodified Tax Increment Financing Act, Act 57 of 2008, sorry, 2018, effective January 1st, 2019, repealed the 1975 Act, uh, 197, 1997, effective August 13th, 1975, for the creation and rule governing the DDA. In the Act 57, Act 125.4201C defines authority as downtown development authority. 125.242301, dissolution of authority, section 230, subsection 1 states, "An authority which has completed," and I quote, "completed the purposes, plural, for which it was organized shall be dissolved by ordinance of the governing body, the Board of Trustees." A substantially similar statement appears, section 11 of the 2012 Bath Township DDA Development Plan and TIF Plan titled "Termination of the Authority." Section 2 of the 1975 Act, which was repealed, however, is still important because it reflects the Act 57 of 2018. Uh, section 2 of, uh, the 1975 Act cites four purposes for the DDA, why the DDA was organized. One, to halt the property value deterioration. Two, the increased property tax valuation in its business district. Three, uh, to eliminate the causes of deterioration. And four, to promote economic growth. Uh, the Recodification, Recodified TIF Act describes uh, certain TIF authorities, uh, and also provides applicable purposes to correct, quote, "to correct and prevent deterioration in residential, commercial, and industrial areas and certain other areas," quote unquote, "to promote residential and economic growth." Uh, that sounded kind of confusing, uh, but that is from Act 57, that part. Uh, since the authority of termination hinges specifically on the completion uh, of the purposes, plural, for which the DDA was organized, the law does not provide the authority of this board to terminate the DDA without completion of the purposes, plural. Furthermore, the argument that the ineffectiveness of the DDA provides these powers is incorrect. The Recodified Act, TIF Act, Act 125.4227, section 227, subsection C, allows allows this, uh, this, uh, sorry, dissolution of the Citizens Council by ordinance of the governing body without authority is directly addressed in 125.4230, section 230, with the stipulation of completed purposes, plural. I respectfully ask the Board of Trustees to provide the citation of authority under which you assert the power to dissolve the DDA by ordinance despite not had, by despite having not completed its purposes. The table and to table the discussion for two weeks to allow for provision and citation, uh, to allow time for formal research, review, and response. Uh, thank you, Nicole Gabrielle, that is from her. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, Fred Bowling? You are unmuted, you can go ahead.
Okay, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
We can.
I got a remote thing, so my microphone wasn't working, but hey, I just want to, um, make a couple of comments on the DDA situation myself, and I, uh, I absolutely haven't chosen any type of a side, whether it should stay, or whether it should go, or whether it's worthy, or whether it's done a darn thing in the last 10 years or not, or whether it's got plans to do things or what. But I want to come at from, uh, I don't know, a position of reason that says, hey, we've got some people that have applied for the DDA, and I kind of went through the, uh, applications a little bit, and they're not, not ridiculous at all. The DDA's sitting on a pretty good chunk of cash that could be used for something, I don't know. I, I guess what I'm saying is, I really don't know, and I'd like to know more about the DDA and what it might do for our township, and what that money could do, I don't know. Um, I hate to throw it away, I'd rather have a large fireworks show and then dissolve the DDA shortly afterwards. Uh, something that, I don't know, but, um, you know, we're in a unique position as far as the township goes. Um, you know, we're close enough to Lansing and Oakmuss and Hazlet to have great stuff there, and yet far enough away to have pretty awesome rural living. And that's kind of what's going on, and I think that's great stuff, so. And I don't know that our downtown is going to develop into something grand or great, but I, at the same time, I personally would, it'd be awesome to have a really super cute downtown, um, for the, for the few people that go there and when they go there. Um, but I don't have a side on this, I'm really asking to, I'd like to garner more information and see if there's other options, and you know, and is there a plan to go forward? Um, is what replaces the DDA, I'd like to know what, you know, does anybody have any, any, any opinions of that? Uh, what, you know, what can be done with the money in the event that we dissolve the DDA rather than sending it back? And not that the state can't use it, or anybody else can't use it back, but, um, gosh, this is kind of our little chunk of cheese, we might be able to do something with some. You know, I wanted to make a note that I've never met Mr. Howe, but he's, he's spot on with a bunch of stuff on the, on the, on the internet chatter that that's probably misinformation. I, I don't know that, or I don't believe that the Board of Trustees really knows what some of these other guys are pretty passionate about. And I'm not sure, and I'm also quite confident that the other people that are passionate about And I'm not sure and I'm also quite confident that the other people that are passionate about keeping the DDA, that they really know where the Board of Trustees are coming from. As a business person, I don't know. I may say it's horrible. We should get rid of it and not pursue it. But at the same time, let's not throw away or give back money that might be used in other ways. Not sure. I'm really, I'm kind of just trying to come to you from a voice, from a voice of someone who hasn't really had enough time to get more involved. I've had a couple of conversations with kind of people on both sides, so to speak, and I'd like to have further conversations and maybe even have some type of Zoom meeting debate, so to speak, so that everybody has a better understanding of where everybody's coming from and whoever the losers are, because there'll be someone that's not, not, not necessarily happy. But to understand why it went that way rather than, and then again, I don't know. Just wanted to make that statement as well as I want to kind of make a statement that I'm on the outreach group for the broadband task force and that is kind of taking my eye off the ball for these larger meetings. Gosh, they still seem like a train wreck.
Mr. Bowlin, thank you ever so much for your comments. I appreciate what you're, we're saying with the DDA and with the broadband because that's really, really important. And I think our trustees, for you, you need to contact them one-on-one to do that because this is not the forum that allows for a discussion to take place. So hang in there, a discussion I'm sure will be taking place, but you know, keep plugging in and by all means. You need to, whether, whatever they do tonight, you need to contact any one of us that's on it.
And Marie, I guess I want to make a statement because I feel I was kind of cut off there.
You were because you're three, they alleged to give you three minutes and I.
Well, I'll wait for my next 30 minutes to speak then. Thank you very much.
No, I, I frankly, I'm not sure with the three minutes how anyone can absolutely get their, their points across. But in this statement, yes, please hang on to it and we will have public statement too. Finish it up then.
I really just wanted to ask you to get a hold of things and try to get things to be smoothed out because it shouldn't be a train wreck. Every time I look at a meeting and nobody knows what's going on, Marie, and you should be involved in the agenda and have it have it crispy and you know what's going on and you're on top of it.
I agree with you 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much, but don't go away. We have public statement two coming up. All right.
Um, Taylor, who you got? You are unmuted. You can go ahead.
All right. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
First, I'd like to know when our in-person meeting is going to begin. These Zoom meetings are a terrible substitute. There is no discussion. There is no forum. There's, you're not listening to the people. You're not hearing from them. You guys are making decisions in a vacuum. Although we got quite a few people here supporting the DDA already. Second point, it's good to see that the DDA board appointments were on the agenda again. Unfortunately, you took them off. You took off the wrong thing. You guys are going backwards. The ordinance dissolving the DDA should have been removed from the agenda. It was not on any previous agenda, not been a topic of discussion. And it's guys don't know what you're doing, basically. Supervisor Howe does though, and she was elected to lead the township. She spent six months trying to find these very well-qualified candidates to get the DDA back implementing their 20-year plan. And you guys aren't supporting it. None of you ran on the prompt. Oh, I'm going to dissolve the DDA as soon as I get elected. I didn't hear that from Treasurer Wisswasser. I didn't hear that from any of the other people who were elected. And certainly didn't hear from, to the people, two people that were not elected. So you better listen to your dang constituents or you're all going to face a recall campaign and it's, it's going to be messy and you're going to blow through your legal budget. So third point. The idea that it says in the ordinance that the authority has completed its purpose, so it can be dissolved. Well, last week you were saying, well, the DDA never did anything. So what is it? The DDA never did anything or it's completed everything it was supposed to do? What? You guys don't seem to understand. Did you ever read the dang plan? Here's the plan right here. Ryan Fuenz Bliss, he was approved of it when he was on the board then. Kathleen McCree, Tom Snyder. So this goes back 10 years, 75 officials in the township worked on this plan for three years, spent over $60,000. You're saying that's worthless. Throw it out. We don't need your dang plans. We ignore you people. That's an insult to everybody that worked on that plan for years. And as you can tell, I'm kind of ticked off on it. Because I am one of the residents and business owners, one of the few that pays double taxation. Now, when I bought my house on Main Street 45 years ago, it was a thriving neighborhood. We had a bank, drugstore, general store, restaurant, all kinds of amenities, all within walking distance. By 2011, 10 years ago, they're all gone. Bacon storefronts, bacon homes. Township says, what are we going to do? Well, this took decades and it happened around the state. The township studied ways to help Main Street. They looked around at the Mason. They looked at Hold, which is Delhi Township, by the way, another charter township. This is, well, DDA seemed to be working pretty good. And that's in fact why they were created. Back in the seventies, downtowns around Michigan, they were devastated by new malls, shopping centers, mires going up. All your businesses are leaving downtown. They're devastated. So the Michigan Legislature says, hey, let's create a DDA act in 1978. The idea is that, see, take a little tiny tax increment on new commercial development. These new guys that are coming in and destroying a downtown. They will take seven cents, seven tenths of a penny on their assessed value and set that aside so they can fix the Main Street that they're destroying. So it worked kind of like a, you know, your piggy bank, you change. Change bucket. When you go home, you throw, oh, I have my change in there. Pretty soon I'll have enough to buy a new garage or whatever. So the township sent out letters to 167 property owners in the proposed district. They all agreed, these 167 property owners, not you, not you, not, none of these people on the board, no. Except Ryan Fuenz Bliss, he thought it was a good idea. So these 167 people said, yeah, good idea. Let's all chip in. We'll throw our spare change in this change bucket. In a few years, we'll have enough to do something. Well, by the way, the commercial guys, their property is more valuable. So instead of throwing in a buck or two a week, I'll throw in 10 bucks a week. And you know what? When they put up a new Wendy's and a McDonald's down by the freeway. That's going to be even more valuable. They'll be throwing in a hundred dollars a week, $200 a week. But you know what? Our treasurer, Wisswasser, has a better idea. He says, let's smash that penny bag, take all their money and do whatever I want with it. The hell with you guys. The hell with any development. He's been the treasurer for 12 years. What have you seen done in to improve this town? Nothing. Now, excuse me for being kind of skeptical, but now he's got some idea where he's going to help improve the downtown. Well, his bookkeeping is fine. I mean, he does, I got no problem with his bookkeeping. The assessors and the auditors give him clean bill of health. But when it comes into the DDA, it was his responsibility to fill out the paperwork and he didn't. Which put the DDA into non-compliance. So I got a question. I gotta, I wonder what is the heck is going on behind the scenes there? What does Mr. Wisswasser know that we don't know? Does he get a kickback from these new developments? Why don't? You know, I haven't heard from one person of these 167 property owners complain about the DDA. Have you sent a letter to all these 167 people saying, oh, I'm taking all your money and going to spend it on somebody else and, and you can never collect anymore to fix your neighborhood. See ya. Forget ya. Well, no, you haven't. You guys are trying to do this on the slide. Those 167 people need to have 20 days notice. It's a tax increment finance district. Follow the law, do it right. And don't upset and, and and don't, you're just upsetting the whole township. All right. You're not doing what the people want. And thank you for listening, but don't ignore the voice of the people. And don't usurp the will of the people. It's our plan, our taxes, not yours. Thank you for listening.
Okay, Taylor, is there anybody else?
Would anyone else like to make a public statement at this time? If so, you can use the raise hand function, raise your physical hand or dial star nine to raise your hand. I do not see anyone additional at this time.
Okay, Taylor, thank you. Do we have any statements from county, state, federal, or other agencies?
If so, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. I do not see anyone at this time.
Thank you, Taylor. I'm afraid my screen doesn't show it. Yours probably does. All right, we're on item eight, according to our agenda, the consent agenda. We need a vote. First, we need a second. Is anybody going to second the vote?
Is there a motion?
Sure. That's what I said. We're on consent agenda.
I know where we are. I just asked for a second. I didn't hear a motion.
Well.
Motion also happened on a consent agenda motion.
Thank you. That's greatly appreciated. Joey, do a good job. All right, we need a vote.
The motion.
Motion, oh Christ, the motion has been made with the consent agenda number eight.
No, I'm following along. I'm asking who, which board member made the motion?
I don't know that it needed, I made the motion. Are you going to make a motion? You can make a motion, second it. That's fine.
Maria, I'm just trying to agree on how things work. A board member has to say, I move, excuse me. A board member needs to say, I move something, and then another board member needs to say, I second it. So I'm just trying to seek clarity about who said what.
The clarity is this, we're on number eight, consent agenda. The motion is, is that accepted? Trustee Benzy seconded, so now we take a vote.
No, you can't do that.
You have to say, I move approval of the consent agenda. If you want to make a motion.
You go ahead. All right. Is that, you making the motion?
No, Marie, I'm trying to ask you and get clarity. So we're all on the same page. So we're not a train wreck, as Mr. Bowling pointed out. We just got to agree on how.
We are, we are a train wreck. Thank you. But deal with it. You're going to have to function.
I am dealing with it by asking you to agree to the rules. That is how I'm dealing with it, Madam Supervisor.
Then deal with these rules, which is the board meeting rules of order. Okay, we already, we already, well, they don't exist, right? Okay, all right, we got two. All right, I'm not sure if it was trustee Rosen, go ahead trustee Rosenkrantz. Hang on there, Joe.
I move we accept the consent agenda. I'll second that.
Again, thank you. Is that fit?
Benzy?
So now we have a vote.
Benzy?
Yes.
Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Howe?
Yes.
Rosekrantz?
Yes.
Wisswasser?
Yes.
Amorigi?
Yes.
Okay. That was painful, but we got through it. Approval of the minutes. And there were some questions, so.
What are the questions?
You have some questions on the minutes you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, I, I do. Just clarification, this is a question so much. Trustee Wisswasser, I'm sure can clarify this without any issue at all. When it speaks to the township accountant, Aaron Stevens. He's not a township, he has town, they have about 40 townships, but he's not a Bath Township. So I guess I'm questioning.
I don't understand what you're saying.
Okay, I'm saying we brought, we brought in an accountant, an auditor CPA who does other townships. He didn't and doesn't do our township.
That's not true. He's our lead accountant for a, for Maynard and Custerison, which is our accounting firm. He is the lead. They have several people from Maynard and Custerison that works for it, but he is actually the lead and the first and the contact person that we have for all that work with Maynard because there are some that are small.
Okay, when I spoke with him today, he didn't mention that, that he was the accountant. He did say he's not an auditor for Bath Township. So, okay, I wanted to make sure that was clear.
He can't be the auditor, he's the accountant. That's why we have an accountant.
So why didn't we use one of our own auditors?
Or what? I don't know what you're referring to.
To come in and talk to us.
About this, what he talked about, about the DDA?
Correct.
Because they are the people who are accountants.
Okay.
And they typically, they're the people we go to first because we have them on retainer and we use them just the same as we would any other professional person or legal person as a retainer type person. Then when it, if it gets to the point that it's an audit question, we refer to the auditor, but we always check with the accountants because they are who write and prepare our financial statements for us for the audit.
So our auditor doesn't do the financial statements?
No.
Okay, so when you have your financial statement, which is what I have, they're done by someone outside the audit.
You know this as well as anybody, you sign vouchers. And you, you sign the vouchers, Marie, every week and you know that we have Maynard and Custerison as a auditing firm. Whereas, excuse me, as a accounting firm here, we did this first, we did this back in 2006 or 2007, when the municipal, I believe it was six, when the Municipal Finance Act changed and you have a township that's worth over $40 million or whatever the number was at the time. I don't have that number right here in front of me. You, they required you to have a CPA firm on staff or a CPA on staff. And that's how, who has to take and, and help you through your financial papers or your financial statements, who prepares that for you? So they come in, they do that work. We have to have an auditor besides them because the financial, the people who prepare our financial statements are the ones who do that. And then the auditors come in and they audit our financial statements. Aaron Stevens is the lead accountant for Maynard and CPA. We got me lost now. For Maynard and Custerison, and that's who our lead person is and that's who our go-to guy is, who we always go to if we have a question. It starts with him. It may go to a different department because Maynard's a very big firm. And it may, if it's something other than what his expertise would be, but generally speaking, he is pretty well-rounded in everything. He is able to take and ask most questions.
Okay, then in our minutes, could it have said Bath Township Accountant?
I guess I don't know where you're referring to in the minutes. I'd have to look to see. I don't really know. I read it and I didn't see anything. It looked out of sight. Township accountant, Aaron Stevens provided insight on the DDA non-compliance notice.
Right.
Is that what you're referring to?
That's page three. That's absolutely, that's one of the starts. So could it have said Bath Township Accountant, Aaron Stevens? Not just Township Accountant?
I think that you're really sorting hairs here, Marie. I think you're fishing for something that's really not.
I'm not fishing for anything.
Typical for you to do this. This is typical what I deal with on a daily basis. My opinion is, is this is what they, they said, this is what he is, that's what he does for us. So no, I don't agree with you one bit. And I'm not going to sort, pick and sort for you. I, I don't agree with that. But then we don't agree on very little of anything. So that's, that's not, that's not a problem.
That's, well, it is a problem from the minutes because these are the official record. So when it says township accountant, they have like 40 townships that they work with.
Actually, they, actually, Marie, I don't think you could even make that statement because they have more than 40 probably. They, they do all sorts of municipalities throughout the state of Michigan. They even work outside the state of Michigan. So you know, as far as using a number to take in basis on a number. That's not what this is about. We asked Aaron Stevens.
Correct.
Superintendent, and I talked about this, we asked Aaron Stevens to come in here as our lead accountant from Maynard and Custerison to give us his opinion on what we had here with this compliance notice. He came in, he gave us the opinion. We talked about it. Since then, we've talked several times. And it's, it's, it is what it is. And I think the, the minute. And it, it's, it's, it is what it is, and I think the, the minutes reflect what he is and what he does for the township.
I would not agree with that, only because, and I talked.
How would you know what he does, or who does what? You know nothing about the accounting of this township. To even sit down with the auditors, to even talk with them when they were here. Two days in a row, you refuse, you flat out flew out of your office and refused. Right here and, and listened to the whole thing.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure that's true, and I'm sure she would agree, but that's not what happened, and you know it, and I know it.
This is take. For what it is, this is, this, let's look at this for what this is. This is true treasurer Wisswasser under the bus. Because he sat here for four years, and he's listened to the vicaring, just like what you're causing right now. They say you're a leader, you're nowhere's near. Let me tell you that right now, and I hope the all seven hundred and fifty people that are hearing me tonight are out there. They listen to this and they realize this, because I deal with you every day. And I'm here to tell you, I've never dealt with anybody. Who is like you to deal with, and that is absolute.
Steve, you've been telling me that for years, for years you've been.
That's a prime example, right there.
Yeah, like I listen. All I'm saying is that. From this township accountant, it would have been clearer if it had said Bath Township Accountant, that's all. So, that's all, Ryan, go ahead, trustee Bliss.
I think it might be more productive if you just made a motion with these proposed changes.
I, well, that's what I asked you earlier. But that's fine, my motion would be, and does that mean you're gonna second it for discussion, or does that mean we're just gonna go back to ignoring it?
I'm just trying to funnel us to some sort of progress.
Okay, uh, no, you're not, but progress as it may seem to you would be. I will make the motion that Bath be added to Township Accountant, Aaron Stevens. He's a very good man to talk with, he was very clear, I have no issues, I talked with him today. My issue with this only says that this was Bath Township, because we don't know in reading these minutes. And as you've all said, this is the official record, not the video. This piece of paper is the official record, so my motion would be. That you would add Bath Township, it says Bath, all you do is add Bath to where it says Township Accountant. So is there a second? Of course not.
Know what, just, just to show you what kind of a hard guy I am to get along with, Marie. Because anybody that can't get the fact that the man who's been here since two thousand and one as the lead accountant. To this township, which I hired him in two thousand and one. Then, then, I guess if they haven't seen his name enough, then I guess that's fine. And this, this is an exercise in, in whatever it is that you and others think they need to do. So that's fine, I'll second this motion, and the board can vote on it any way they want to vote on it.
Well, first of all, go ahead. I can see you, Joe, go ahead, trustee Benzy. Yeah, pardon?
Call for the question.
He's calling for a question, which means that no more discussion, you have a vote.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, do you know what, Ryan, do you understand what the motion is? The motion is to add Bath. To the minutes. So that it reflects that it was a Bath Township Accountant, Aaron Stevens, who was here. That's the motion. I'm sorry, clerk, go ahead.
Dewan's Bliss?
I'm gonna ignore that demeaning comment and vote yes on your motion, Madam Supervisor.
How?
Oh, yes.
Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Wisswasser?
Absolutely.
Omariji?
Good pleasure.
Benzy?
Good man.
Yeah, I'm there.
Okay, so the motion passes to add Bath to our minutes. Now, there's a motion to accept the minutes. As amended. Somebody's going to make the motion, Ryan? Apparently not.
Make the motions, accept the minutes.
Thank you, trustee Benzy. All right.
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Rosecrantz?
That was you.
Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Wisswasser?
Yeah.
Omariji?
Yes.
Benzy?
Yes.
Okay, takes care of that. Okay, now we have the approval of the vouchers, which is number ten.
I move to approve the vouchers.
How?
Yes.
Rosecrantz?
Yes.
Omariji?
Yes.
Benzy?
Yes.
Dewan's Bliss?
Yes.
Wisswasser?
Yeah.
All right, we took off committee appointments, you removed that, so that doesn't exist. At this stage. There was no vote, okay, unfinished business, which is twelve. We have an introduction for discussion. Okay, we did that. Now, I'm assuming you all have a copy of seventy-four point one?
Yes.
So, the amendment, just so it's understood, because I'm making it. Would be to approve ordinance number seventy-four point one. Do I have a second? Okay.
Madam Supervisor?
Yes.
Um, you and I discussed that it wouldn't be on for action because of the changes that you made.
So what you're saying is there's no vote?
It's under discussion.
No, that's what we discussed.
To second it, to discuss it, so I'm not getting a second, so. We'll move.
Supervisor, you can discuss it in this section without a motion, please go ahead and introduce.
Of course I can discuss it, but. Would you like, all right, okay, we'll go with this. What I did, and what I wanted, was to be able to confirm that it was a three-year term. The staggered terms as trustee Feedwick Bliss had discussed, makes all the sense, all of our committees should be staggered. This is something that the superintendent and I have talked about many times, is that when we end up with an ordinance, that it be cleaned up. So that it's reflecting exactly what it is that's wanted. So as you can see, I have put down to capitalize certain pieces. Like the sanitary sewer board of appeals. To be capitalized, and that all of the appeals that come before the board are properly submitted. To the agenda. When you go into the next paragraph, section one terms, maybe the second paragraph. The member shall be a resident or a business owner who pays township property tax. And the member should be appointed. The term of office, again, is a three-year, which is what we, and they should be staggered, which is what we've requested. Uh, the vacancies, and, and. Whether it's of or for, who cares? I mean, seriously, that, that to me doesn't make a whole lot of difference, but it's of, is what apparently has been put, maybe I, I put it there. Your meeting, again, there's capitalization, sanitary sewer board of appeals is capitalized. And it goes on to say, shall meet as frequently as necessary to hear all appeals properly submitted to such board. Then, in the red, it states, all other organizational matters shall be determined by an ordinance amendment to the Bath Charter Township. And the reason that it says an ordinance is because that's a law. And when the research is done on what it is that boards have done, whether it's yours or former, or. You know, Al would know this, it goes back to the seventies, you don't have to search for a resolution. Which is usually stapled to, or. Put someplace, some of them I couldn't find, when I was doing my research. So this particular point says that you will change the ordinance amendment, not through the resolution. Yes, trustee Rosenkrantz?
Uh, I take it everything in red is things you've changed?
That's correct.
Uh, I don't understand why an outside business owner, living out of the township, but.
No, what?
Township should be on the board of appeals.
Or any board. Because, again, this is changing simply your one. Ordinance that we're changing, okay, this, this happens to be the board of appeals. Now, why would they want to be there? There's a lot of reasons why they'd want to be there, but one of the most important is the fact that they have skin in the game. In other words, they pay property tax. So discriminating against someone who is a business owner, I think is a problem. I think business owners actually could and do make really good committee members.
I know this is your opinion, but that don't mean it's an opinion of the board.
Oh, no question.
And it's not opinion of me.
That's.
Been here a long time.
I know, and that is an old rule, that's exactly right. Nope, I understand that. But your business owners, if you're looking for economic development, and they do have skin in the game, which is they pay property tax. Should be on and have the capability of being on our boards and our committees. But again, you're right, that's my opinion, not yours.
That's right.
Yep, any other discussion? Well, I don't even know if we got a second.
There's no vote.
I didn't think so.
There's no vote, it's not on to vote on.
Okay, so we will, that's the discussion. Okay, you have nothing else to say, there's no other board except trustee Rosenkrantz. Thank you, Al, that was appreciated, okay. Now, we're at B, capital B, twelve, I think is what that is, items for action. And you already declared, Brian, that you may have, but apparently it was. Silently decided that that's not a conflict of interest, for some, the definition is a financial interest. That isn't your case, so. Obviously, join in. So this is saying without conditions, that you're going to have a special use permit. Now, it doesn't have anybody that's explaining this again, so I'm assuming superintendent Hilda Brandt? Oh, there's a question.
No, it's Nick, Nick and I are available. There are any questions, um, we had a great deal of discussion last time, I didn't put anybody on here, because it's up for action. But if there are questions, of course, staff is here to recognize those questions.
Thank you, any questions? Apparently, there seems to be one, yes, trustee, I see you, I can, you're good, trustee Feedwick Bliss, go right ahead.
I, I just want to clarify, you said that there's no conditions, but the memo that I read, that there's three, four, well, three conditions.
Yeah.
Says with conditions.
Seven conditions, three of which have been met, four of which still need to be met. Um, I'm happy to read through those conditions if anyone has questions about what those are, uh, but otherwise, they're provided for in the packet.
I'd like to have you, uh, say it all.
Sure, so the three that have been met, uh, the first recommended condition would be that the applicant provide confirmation of approvals. From all agencies to the township, those agencies, including the Michigan Department of Transportation. Clinton County Road Commission, Clinton County Drain Commission, Southern Clinton County Municipal Utility Authority, and the Mid-Michigan District Health Department. Um, all of those approvals are attached in this packet as well. The second condition that has been met is that the RV sanitary dumping station will be designed to be locked. And only accessible by employees of A and D Repair. It will also be designed to the satisfaction of SCUMA, uh, with the intent of preventing infiltration of stormwater runoff. A testing access point will be added at the force main on the A and D Repair property. To allow SCUMA to test the discharge from the RV sanitary dumping station. Uh, the design of that dumping station, the documentation for that has been attached to this packet as well. The third condition that's been met is that the applicant will work with MDOT and the township to receive MDOT approval for a permit. Uh, for work within the road right of way, in this particular case, that would be directionally drilling under old M seventy-eight. To allow construction of the private sanitary sewer connection. Uh, the, that MDOT permit is attached to this email. Uh, the four conditions that have not been met yet, uh, the first is that the planning commission shall have review and approval rights. Over the private sanitary sewer connection design. The second will be that A and D Repair will enter into a maintenance agreement with MDOT and Bath Township. To ensure that A and D Repair is responsible for all maintenance and costs associated with maintenance of the private sanitary sewer connection. Uh, the third condition here still to be met is a recommended condition, but is a typical part of our site plan review process. It's that the applicant will provide a cost estimate for all work, uh, earthwork to the township planner. The applicant will then provide a check totaling seven percent of the estimated cost of that earthwork. To be placed in escrow with the, the township to ensure that all of those improvements are made as designed. Once the improvements are made, any, uh, excuse me, and any outstanding invoices are paid. Which would be review fees for those other agencies. Uh, any outstanding amount in that escrow account will be refunded to the applicant. And the fourth condition there is that all other conditions must be met before building permits.
I love them. Tell Bruce to behave himself.
I think we got through most of that. Yes, sir.
Why are we allowing them to have four things that they're not, they haven't done yet, when they've had three weeks to work on?
Uh, the conditions being a part of a special use permit for approval are very normal for any sort of a special use permit process. Uh, sometimes the conditions take longer, uh, sometimes the conditions are things that don't make sense to have completed. Until after it's been okayed by the board. Um, so this is just a normal part of the process, and, you know, as I stated, that last condition, which I think my dog's, oh, so politely interrupted. Uh, is that all of the other conditions would need to be met before they could pull building permits.
Trustee Rosecrantz, if I may, um, A and D Repair, um, and the owner have been, um, a, a good group to work with. Um, I have no, without a doubt, um, his interest in being able to move forward, um. Will, um, aid in his compliance, um, I have no reason to believe that he won't still meet these conditions. And, um. Has, he's been working towards, towards doing.
He's still doing, uh, earthmoving and, and preparing the site, did I take it?
I believe that's all he was allowed to do prior to, uh, the board of trustees approving this, um, site plan and special use permit. Yes. I have not visited the site, though, so I can't answer that to you completely, but I think his intention was to do as much as he could. Until you voted on this tonight.
And the planning commission hasn't had a chance to meet, I take it?
Um, I think all the planning commission needs to do is approve the sewer, um, design component. And that will pen, I believe, SCUMA taking a look at that, and then the planning commission giving the nod, so. Nick, is that correct? Oh, can someone unmute Nick, please, Taylor? Thank you.
Was jogging, so clearly that was very upsetting for them. The planning commission is meeting tomorrow night. Uh, the reason for that recommended condition about the planning commission having that final approval of the, the design. Uh, solely that one of the planning commissioners who has a background in sewer work, uh, requested that. Um, there was no opposition from the other planning commissioners. Um, the sewer design has already been okayed, uh, and approved by SCUMA. Um, you know, there's documentation in the packet on that, and I also spoke with, uh, Brad Gersky from SCUMA on Thursday. And, and he said to me in no uncertain terms that he has absolutely no concerns about the sewer design going forward.
Okay.
Joe?
Trustee Benzy?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve, uh, approve the A and D repair expansion. With the findings of facts and the conditions that have been listed by the planner.
Support.
Omar Reji?
Yes.
Benzie?
Yeah.
Hewens Bliss?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Rose Kranz?
No.
Wissfoster?
Yes.
I'm sorry, um, Madam Supervisor, I didn't allow you to call for further discussion. I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's quite all right. Put a smile on my face, so you're okay.
When I put the microphone close to her, she thinks it's time to go.
No, not yet. She's, she's got a little ways to go yet. All right, so that, is it, that passes, not unanimously, but it does pass. So A and D Repair, you know, expansion. You now can move forward. Where, I know he's here. There he are, Eric. Thank you. Good thumbs up. That was a lot of work. All right. Now, you know, the really odd thing is, I've got C circled, which is the introduction, first reading, which again, that in itself needs to be looked at, but that's okay, of sixty-three point two to dissolve the Bath Charter Township. Now, underneath that.
Matt.
Beat, okay, help me.
No, it's okay. Um, you skipped over, um, twelve BP, introduction and first reading of Consumers Energy.
And I've got it right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'm, I'm looking at my notes instead of.
Oh, okay.
Looking what I should look at. This is, okay, this is ordinance forty-four point one. Does anyone want to make a motion?
Or if there are questions, I'm here for those as well.
Well, that would be after we get a second. So who's going to motion it, and then we'll second it? So there is no motion?
Al has his hand out.
Oh, thank you, Al. You're gonna have to scream.
Green have a little problem with people raising their hands in them?
Yep.
I see. Okay, I would, uh, move with, uh, go, go with, uh, the section, introduction of the second reading, or the first reading of the forty-four point one for Consumers Energy Company.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with reading that. That makes sense to me. All right, is there a second?
I'll second that to get it on the agenda, but I'm not sure I'm on a vote board. I want to know more about it.
Nope, that's what a second is for, is for discussion. Okay, now it's open for discussion. Now, trust, treasure Wissfoster wants more discussion on it, so who's going to, is that going to be you, Karen, or is that?
Yeah, so I can do that. Um, are you, do you have specific questions or? Okay, so in the past, we've had a, um, an electric franchise ordinance that we signed with them in the nineties. Um, this was forwarded to, um, former, um, Clerk McQueen's email, and I received it, um, and asked for an extension so that it could be considered, um, by us. Um, to my knowledge, and I've not spoken with any members of the Consumers, um, Energy Company, but it's a franchise in the same way we have, um, cable or broadband franchises, and that it allows, it allows them to uh, put infrastructure in the ground, and it holds the township harmless for anything that may happen as a result of that.
Ooh. Does that mean if they break into a line? That's not the township. That would be the Consumer Energy Company, correct?
Correct. If there happens to be damage as a result of what they're doing, we're supposed to be held harmless, correct? Do you have other questions? Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Does he have a second question?
Nope, that's what he was looking for, was the hold harmless.
Okay. All right, is there anybody else? Apparently, there doesn't seem to be, so I guess we need a vote.
Okay.
I didn't hear her.
Benzie?
Yes.
Hewens Bliss?
I think you left the room.
Try him last.
Okay. Hal?
Yes.
Rose Kranz?
Yes.
Wissfoster?
Yeah.
Omar Reji?
Yes.
Hewens Bliss?
Yes.
Okay. We can't see you, so that's, was that a confirmation, a yes for the, okay?
It was. I was in the restroom, excuse me.
No, you're not allowed to do that. All right. So apparently that, that appears to be unanimous. So ordinance forty-four point one, dealing with the Consumer Energy Gas Company is a unanimous vote of confidence. Okay. Now, we get to see us in Charles for items for action. Only I, I've got a question before we go into that. And this is for trust, for superintendent Hilda Brandt. I don't know if it's a good time to do it or a bad time to do it. But when you do your introduction and first reading, that's actually, the introduction was last month. The first reading is now of your ordinance. So do we or do we not take a vote at this time on ordinance sixty-three point two as a first reading? Do we need a second reading, which means that it's held over for the next meeting?
Um, the introduction is always the introduction of the text.
Okay.
And the first reading, if you vote for it tonight, it, uh, if it is approved tonight, it will move on for second reading and approval.
Okay.
The next meeting.
At the next meeting. So there's actually three steps. That's what I'm trying to understand, correct? You have your introduction, which we didn't have the written part, but it was introduced and, and the board voted to eliminate the DDA. So that's step one. Step two is the introduction of the ordinance. Step three then is voting on the ordinance at next meeting.
Introduction and first reading are taken as one action, and second reading and approval are taken as one action.
Okay. So the introduction is not in that. Okay.
Introduction, introduction is taken differently. It's not the introduction of the topic, it's the introduction of the text.
Of, okay, got it. So that in the first reading. All right, do we have a motion, which means again, this would be our next meeting, which is when? June twenty-eighth?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. No, I, I guess twenty-eighth, something else. Twenty-first, okay. Just so I'm understanding. Right, Ryan, did you want to make the motion?
Yes, please. I would move approval of, uh, move first reading and approval of ordinance number sixty-three point two dissolution of the Downtown Development Authority.
I'll second that.
Okay, in discussion? I, I can see it. Good man. That's what you need to do. All right, trustee Rosenkranz?
Can I have the, the, uh, resolution read? So the people that are on the internet can know what it says.
Well, there is no resolution. It's an ordinance. Is that what you mean?
You don't say anything except what is in the motion?
I, I can, um, I could read the summary.
Yes.
Okay. In ordinance to dissolve the Downtown Development Authority for Bath Charter Township pursuant to the provisions of the Recodified Tax Increment Financing Act, Act Fifty-seven Public Acts of Michigan of two thousand eighteen, as amended, to provide that the two thousand twelve Bath Charter Township Tax Increment Financing Plan has no force and effect as of the date of this ordinance, to transfer the surplus funds to the taxing bodies, to transfer the property and assets of the authority to the General Fund of the Bath Charter Township after the satisfaction of the obligations of the authority to repeal Chapter twenty-three of the Bath Charter Township Code of Ordinances and to provide for other matters related thereto.
Thank you.
All right, trustee Feeden Bliss, do you have a question?
No, I have a, a statement. I just wanted to clear up something that, uh, Mr. Bowling had said in his comments. This, this money isn't going to be sent anywhere. This is township tax money that will stay in the township, other than the LCC tax, which will go to LCC. So there's no money being sent back to the state. There's no money leaving the community. It's all staying here, other than the LCC tax, just to clarify that.
That was a thank you.
Okay. Yeah, trustee.
Well. I have a statement as well, Mary.
Oh, I think Justin had his hand up first. Hang on, hang on once. I, I think he did.
Uh, Justin defers to, uh, uh, Steve.
Of course.
Thank you.
Go ahead, treasure.
Um, and, and the, along the same, um, lines I heard both from, from, uh, resident Will White as well as Mr. Bowling. This money that will be, um, redistributed is only the LCC money, which roughly, if you had to do the math, it's roughly a third of what the fund balance is. The fund balance will remain in the, in the fund balance and, and an account that's created for that and, and the same checking account. As a matter of fact, the way I did this, because it's restricted, it can only be spent in the DDA district. We did not do away with the DDA district. We did away with the authority board is what, what essentially is what's happened here. But the money will still be there, and in this motion, it provides the same as what it did before. It provides for, uh, to be become a CIP item in the capital improvement process, the same as what the planning commission looks at on all the others. And it will be looked at every year and be added to, and money will be spent in the district as of the, being needed. There could even be such a thing, and, and I'll throw this out there, and when you get, if this does become law, oh, there could be such a thing, you could still come, you could have a township board subcommittee or a committee of members to take and, and decide what improvements you want to make and how you want to do it. The only thing you're doing away here with is the authority board, which is, seems to be the problem, and getting people there to make decisions and getting things done. That's the only thing that, that my motion was when, the other day when I made this motion. Anybody has spent, and I'm, I'm going to correct Mr. White just a little bit. I haven't been a treasurer. I may have been a treasurer for twelve years, but I was a trustee for four years before that as well. I've been around township government a long time, and I am looking to make it more effective. And that's what my motion was I made last board meeting, and that's what this will do. This will make it more effective. Township can take and continue to take and support this. They can continue to fund it. All you gotta do is everybody's just gotta sit down and work together. As far as the gentleman, Mr. Howell goes, I think I'm familiar with who he is. I, I respect what he says. Oh, I respect everybody here, but you know, this, this is a very heated argument, and, and, and I think that this is a good thing to do for the money. No, I'm not the only one that decides what's best for tax dollars. But I'm going to tell you this, I did my darn best, and I have improved it since I've been here in the past four years to get you more tax dollars. I cleaned it up. I made the, the, the language so that the, there are the funding rights, so it was being collected right. Your, your were, if you look at your two thousand twelve estimate, I've read this thing from front to back. I'm pretty familiar with it. If you look at the two thousand twelve estimate for the year two, two thousand twenty, which we just finished up, it was, it was off, the estimate was off by four point five million dollars. The capture was off by two point two million dollars as far as what the total of values were for taxable values and everything. There's nothing saying nothing bad about the way it started, but it's like everything else. It grows and it needs to have more attention. It needs to have be more looked at. There's nothing saying we can act still fund this thing. I'm going to say that one more time. If anybody's got any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Go here, trustee Omar Reji. Think you're, uh, I think you're the only one.
Um, so I, I bear with me. I, I, I have notes, uh, that I want to read through. Uh, so one of the things that I keep seeing over and over again is that this board makes decisions, uh, without thoroughly discussing. I, I would like to be transparent in, uh, why I'm supporting the dissolution of the DDA, and so, um, I, I have, uh, a lengthy set of comments. So again, please bear with me as I read through these. Um, so to my understanding, I, I, the DDA has been, um, I, I took a long time to get established. Uh, it sounds like that there was some work that was done as early as two thousand eight. Uh, to bring this together, the first committee I, uh, that I saw, uh, on the township website in terms of the meeting minutes was September of two thousand eleven. Um, but I think it was, uh, September, January seventh of two thousand thirteen, when the board approved the second reading of the DDA ordinance and the TIF plan. Now, my understanding of what the goals of the DDR, I, there's three main goals. To establish a, a positive economic environment for residents and businesses, to provide innovative and creative policy direction and resources to implement revitalization and new development projects, and to create a sustainable employment and destination center for the Bath community and the tri-county region. Now, to obtain those goals, they've created twenty-two objectives across four areas. Eight economic objectives, six public facilities, infrastructure objectives, five public studies and policy initiative objectives, and three sense of place objectives. Now, I've gone through and read almost every meeting minute of the DDA since two thousand eleven to really, I, I gather, uh, what has the DDA accomplished? And so, um, I know there are things that I, are, I, that accomplishments that cost money, and I've reviewed financial records, and there's accomplishments that were free. Uh, if you're on the Bath community page, you probably have seen the fifty thousand posts by Mr. White, uh, uh, reminding us of what those object, uh, those accomplishments are. But in my, what I've seen is, I, I, a few major objectives, uh, are, are accomplishments. One, they accepted a donation for a parcel on Main Street. I, they removed trees, uh, and stumps. That was done in two thousand eighteen. Uh, they seal coated parking areas in two thousand eighteen. I, they edged the sidewalk in preparation for Bath Days in two thousand seventeen. Uh, they spent, I think, nine hundred and eighty dollars on those blue DDA signs. Um, I, they donated five hundred dollars for a garden shed for the community garden. Um, and then they also conducted a community survey in two thousand eighteen. Those are the things that I see as like the major accomplishments. Um, there's also what I would call, uh, near accomplishments. I, and those include, I, I, a downtown sidewalk project. I, by my estimation, that was approved, I, but never really got, was followed through. I, there was a facade improvement grant program. Again, that was improved, uh, but not much came of that. Uh, there was quite a bit of work talking about the Cousins Park, putting bathrooms there, that appeared to be killed at the, uh, the board trustees level. Um, I, of course, there's the Kupila Restoration Project, and so that was approved. They had, I, I, they had accepted a bid, negotiated that bid. Again, that, uh, was not followed through. That was approved, I think, in two thousand nineteen. Um, and so I, I, and so I look at this and, and I wonder, like, what exactly has the DDA accomplished? Has it, uh, accomplished or made significant progress towards any of the economic, uh, any of its objectives or its big goals? And, and I'm not seeing it. I, I, at, towards the end of two thousand nineteen, Brian Shortkey, who is the planning department director and, uh, staff member, uh, for the DDA, he wrote a memo on the DDA accomplishments, and one of the, uh, uh, statements that he made was, in a concluding statement, it is, quote, "After seven years, the DDA has not accomplished any of its goals listed in the DDA plan. Furthermore, the DDA has only partially or fully accomplished five out of a total of twenty-two objectives." This is after seven years of operation, and then, of course, I, twenty-twenty, there was no, uh, activity. There was a, a attempt to create a, a, a business, uh, grant program. I, so, um, now, there's been all sorts of different, I, I discussions about what, uh, other things that the DDA has accomplished or taken credit for that I don't necessarily agree with. So one is the community garden. I know, uh, Mr. White has said that this was a DDA project, but if you go to the meeting minutes on August sixth, two thousand eighteen, But if you go to the meeting minutes on August sixth, two thousand eighteen, there was this back and forth, and the DDA failed to vote to approve it. To approve recognizing the garden, uh, community garden as a DDA project. Public art committee, uh, November twenty-sixth, this, uh, it, the idea may have come from the DDA, but it was really the work of the board. I to create a public art policy, um, this was to take care of some, I, leaked funding. I, directional signs, clearly the idea came from the DDA, there was discussion about people who were. Interested in, couldn't find businesses in the DDA, so they made a recommendation to the township. But all the work for those directional signs was accomplished by the township, not the DDA. I, Bath Cleanup Days, uh, this, this came up on social media. I was, was that a DDA project, or was that a legacy project of the Bath Days Beautification Community Committee? Um, I I'm not quite clear there, I, it's certainly the DDA did I I I participate in that. But is is it a project of the DDA, and it doesn't, I, seem like it. Um, there was a a comment on Facebook that Dollar General and the Food Bank, I are, I I. Um, the DDA had direct input on that, I I want to redo a quote again from that same two thousand nineteen memo by Brian Shortkey. Quote, Dollar General, I, 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 sorry, Dollar General built a new store in Bath Corners in two thousand nineteen. The site plan was reviewed by the DDA, but the comments from the DDA were not implemented on the final approved site plan. As a result, Dollar Gen, oh, hold on, let me back up here, we're seeing small text on a computer. I quote, Dollar General built a new store I at Bath Corners in two thousand nineteen, the site plan was reviewed by the DDA, but the Dollar General. Chose the site in consultation with the staff, not the DDA. Furthermore, the comments from the DDA were not implemented on the final approved site plan. As a result, Dollar General could be, uh, could be, uh, could be said to have been built in spite of the DDA. Instead of because of the DDA, furthermore, by that measure, no business in the past seven years has opened due to direct action. Of the DDA, again, this is Brian Shortkey's memo, that's a quote by him. Um, so, uh, among, uh, so, looking at the final financial expenditures, I just wanted to point out. What was accomplished during two thousand nineteen, so this is pre-COVID, uh, pre-pandemic. Um, and so just a list of items that I I, the DDA spent money on. Now, again, think about what those goals are of DDA revitalizing the community, bringing in business. So, DDA spent twenty-four dollars on DDA business cards. They donated a hundred dollars to a state lobbyist. I, I, they redid the Bath DDA signs for a cost of ninety-five dollars. They donated a hundred and twenty-five dollars to a golf outing, I'm not sure how donating to a golf outing really contributes to improving. I, the downtown districts, um. I, they they bought, uh, or they paid for a booth at Bath Days and advertising, that was three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Uh, they attended a conference and paid for a membership to the Michigan Downtown Association, that was four hundred and seventy-five dollars. They bought candy for twenty bucks, and then they paid taxes on the parcel that they had received in donation. Those were all the expenses of two thousand nineteen, from my reading, I may have missed some things, but I don't think there was any. Other significant spending or accomplishments. Um, now, committee members, I've heard a lot about committee members, I, oh, Mr. Phillips won't, uh, appoint members. But let me, I did some research today, so let me, let me talk about DDA committee members. Thirty-one people have been appointed to the DDA since two thousand eleven. Of these appointments, fifty-five percent either resigned or stopped showing up to meetings. During his term as supervisor, Mr. Phillips made eleven appointments to the DDA. Um, nine of those appointments, uh, nine of those eleven appointments resigned, eighty-two percent of those appointments resigned. So you have to wonder, why would someone make appointments to the DDA when, over its history, there's at least a fifty-five percent. Uh, attrition rate, uh, but, you know, eighty-two percent in the last three years, four years. Um. Another thing, this is more larger, I I worry that I have, you know, the DDA in accomplishing its mission. Um, I can be, uh, there's a fine line be between revitalization and gentrification. Gentrification is where housing prices rise because, uh, values are are rising. And one of the unintended outcomes of that is, is that, uh, people could no no longer afford to live where they've lived. And so I do wonder, I, of the hundred and sixty-seven parcels, I'm not sure, I I forget what that number was. I, how many people act, who live in the DDA actually want a DDA? I don't think there's any data there, I I looked at the two thousand seventeen community survey. I, that's, uh, the DDA did, um, of the a hundred and forty-five or hundred and fifty. People who responded to that survey, only forty-five, I I indicated that they resided in the downtown development. Uh, district, I, so, I mean, and and you look at the questions of that survey, there was nothing about, do you approve the the DDA? And so, I mean, if there's data there, and how many people actually want a DDA? I would love to see that, I've heard both sides, clearly Will White wants a DDA. I've also heard other people that say that DDAs are, I, I, it's a waste of time, I, we don't need this extra level of government. Um, and then finally, I I, the DDA has become a political spectacle. Um, you go to social media, I, I, at any point over the past two years, and it is just. Um, I, a small number of people who are ramming DDA this, DDA that, lack of. I, I, um, respect, lack of, lack of appointments, not showing up, all this kind of stuff, and. It's a political platform, it shouldn't be a political platform, if we really care about making improvements in our community. We wouldn't make it a crap show on social media, we'd be working together, we'd be trying to be work, working together. You know, the the thing that I find so frustrating with this is that there's all this blame about. You know, the 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 failure of the DDA is someone else's responsibility, when the people who are running the DDA. People who have vested interest in DDA don't recognize that accomplishing goals takes hard work. And you have to build bridges, you don't accomplish things by burning bridges, burning people on on Facebook. So, all these reasons are why I personally am voting in favor of dissolving the DDA. I don't see any real progress, I see a bunch of crap on Facebook. Uh, and then people sitting here demanding resignations and lack, I mean, it's just a mess. If I, if I thought that there would could be any way of of fixing this, I would be totally for it, I am. Through and through Democrat, I want to see, I I, more assets in our community, and frankly, I think the township is much more. Effective at meeting that goal than the DDA has been, or I could be.
All right, if everyone, is there any other comments?
I have another comment, Marie, I'd like to finish, as long, as long, as long as I was spoke about early on, I'm I'm gonna speak a little more here.
Okay.
Two thousand sixteen, I came back here after twelve years of service, and and I came back with with a different view. Uh, I was very fortunate to be able to travel around the the country. And and a job I had for eight years, as well as around the state and see how things in small towns and cities and whatnot. How they they interact and what goes on, I learned a lot by 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 my, uh, time I spent with these folks. But, my my point I want to make here is. I'm gonna stress this once more, I'm gonna talk about this some more, you know, in two thousand, I'll use two thousand twenty as an example. In two thousand twenty, Bath Township put forty-four thousand and some change into the DDA's seventy-seven thousand. That's what they made up of that, and there's not, my motion and my intent of this is is that money's not going away from that district. That money is staying in that district, and we're gonna continue to build on it, I believe the balance tonight is like two hundred and seventy thousand, just a little more. But that money would stay there, but I point to what this township has did, and a lot of it was done by that same board as the DDA. That created the DDA, that same bunch then during that same eight-year period. But I point to your library, your public library, and how successful that is, and how that started with township help, we give it a jump start. We give them money, we did what we needed to do, I point to the art committee, which was brought up on social media and pointed out to me. And what they do to our community and what they've offered our community in a way of.
That's true.
Diversity and 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 whatnot that we have, I point to you, the biggest one, it's the most amazing of all to me, is the farmer's market. And how self-sufficient these folks are, and they had, they didn't have a fundraiser last year because of COVID, they couldn't have one. But they had sixteen thousand dollars in their in their fund balance. That, and they usually raised about eleven, twelve thousand a year in their fund, at their fundraiser. They was able to work through with their fund balance, they still, if you look at our our twenty twenty audit, you're gonna find they got about a three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollar fund balance left. They was able to survive, and the fun, and the farmer's market, in my opinion, is stronger than ever, and they know what the common goal of all this stuff is. Is, these are all Bath people that did this, they were citizens that was involved in the community, that they believed in what they were doing. And we gave them a little cookie, and they took it, and they made something good out of it, there's no politics, there's no slamming people, you don't see that. It's just plain people working with public money, and this public money is gonna continue to flow. As long as I'm here, and I'm gonna be here for a little while longer, I hate to disappoint you, Will, but I'm gonna be here for a little while longer. But as long as I'm here, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna let this go, I'm gonna push for this, because I want to see, uh, I really would like to see people like Mr. Howell. And some of these other people get involved in our, in our system here, and and take this stuff and do something with it, we don't need, all that DDA is. Is three letters, DDA, we can still put the same amount of money in that Bath always put in. We have a fund balance that's better than most townships around, our accounting is good, our fund balance is good, our bookkeeping is good. Our our people we hire here, our professional people are good, and there's no reason why this thing cannot be taken and handled by the township. And you can commit, you can create a subcommittee, you can put anybody you want on it, but that's what you did with all these other things, with the library, you did that. With the farmer's market, you did that, with the art committee, you did that, you know, and Parks and Rec is big, but you, you can do that. And you can take and make this thing work with what it is, now, does the township have the authority to take and bond and borrow money and whatnot? Like DDAs can, not necessarily the same way, but the township's not broke. And I think that that's gonna come out and be very evident in the next couple of weeks here, especially, because once again, we've had a good audit, we've had a good. Uh, COVID, if you can say a lot of things about COVID, but COVID brought this township some money in the way of fund balance again. And 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 you got, you you qualified, and I think everybody that's on this board knows, on on the American Rescue Act Grant Program. We're gonna get about one point three eight million dollars out of that, and that's what Mr. White, that's what Mr. Bowinger, and that's what Jason, that's what all these people are working on. That's where some of this money's gonna come from to fund some of this stuff. I mean, you can say what you want to say about me, I don't really care, that's part of being elected official, I can take that, but the bottom line is, is take pride in yourself. Don't just look at DDA, think about it, you can take and do this, the same as what the library people did, you can do it the same as what the, the, the. Farmer's Market did, the art committee did, and many others, I could go on for forever and ever, we don't underfund anything here. There's people who want money, yeah, because we got money, every little outfit in the township wants a little money. But this is something that's gonna be restricted money, restricted funds that can be put into a good place to be used for good purposes. You can call me whatever you want to call me, I don't say I know it all, I don't know it all, but I know one thing, as many years as I've been here, I care about it. My name's around here, my focus is around here, and I care about it, end of story, that's all I got, Marie.
All right, is there anybody else, because I have comments to that, yes, Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll keep mine, uh, brief, I've heard a couple of things that, uh, folks.
I'm not brief.
I heard a couple of things that have been mentioned that I just want to be really clear to. Uh, it it is very unclear that keeping the DDA is the will of the people, it is the will of some people, and that's okay. But not all people, I went on to Mr. White's Facebook posts and just four random comments pulled. The DDA has done not much for ten years, Bath will be alive without a DDA, just as it has for well over a hundred years before, let it go. What the DDA did handle was next to nothing over several years, a small project here and there that volunteers probably could have completed themselves. Ninety percent of the DDA people never stopped running their mouths, never realizing what Bath residents want, they would rather argue. Not debate with the townspeople, so I I firmly feel the passion of Mr. White and others. Uh, you've made it clear, and and I value that, there's just a disagreement here, but what a disagreement doesn't make is some sort of nefarious concept. Ms. Elsenheimer claims that we're part of a good old boys' club, like I'm sitting in some smoke-filled room with a cigar all the time. Budding around with all of you, I don't see you all, I don't see any of you except for the meetings, we are not some cabal running the township behind closed doors. We're a board running the township in open meetings. I, same family posted last, last month on the Facebook, Steve, I don't think your dad is very proud of you right now. That's the level of discourse we're entering in. Accusing the treasurer that he's getting kickbacks because he has a different opinion, now, Steve and I don't always agree. At all, but that doesn't mean that he's committing a crime, and I think that's horrendous accusations for someone who's been a public servant. Constant claims that Jason should have no say because he's unelected, again, ironically, one of the people making these claims. Also tried to be an unelected member during our appointment process, it's ugly and it's unfair. We just disagree on this, and I think that's, that's fair, at the end of the day, folks have asked to give it a chance, to take a leap of faith. To appoint new people and give them a try, and folks have said, I don't know enough to make this decision, it has been ten years. I was there, I sat here on this board when we made this decision, it's been ten years, that's enough time to give it a try. That's enough time to appoint multiple people, as Jason mentioned, it's just not working. At the end of the day, nothing that I'm saying is going to convince those I disagree with, and that's, that's just fine. But I want to bring this back to reality, the sun does not rise and fall on the DDA, Bath Township does not succeed or fail on the DDA. This will be a policy discussion, a policy disagreement, at the end of the day, we're all still good people who want the best. For what is Bath Township, we just might not agree what that is, but that doesn't mean this ugliness is necessary.
That's pretty good, is there anybody else? Well, then I'm gonna comment, I'm not quite sure where to start. Jason, I think I can outdo you, but I I think I'll try to keep it between you and Ryan, somewhere in between the two. I have a question for for the treasurer. Am I to understand that what this ordinance will do is eliminate just the board?
That's what the ordinance will eliminate, is the authority board.
The authority board, which.
District is still there, we said that the last time, we didn't know how to, we didn't know how to frame it, and so, I I didn't know how to frame it. There wasn't even no we about it, if you remember right, when I made the motion, I listened to everybody argue, and I got tired of it, the same as I have the last four years. I've been back here and seen all the successes I've seen with all these other programs, I says, I'm gonna throw this out there, we'll see where it's gonna go. And I laid the groundwork for the restriction of the money, and for the money to be kept in there, and the DDA district to stay in there. And everything as far as the district goes, the only thing we're dissolving here is the TIF plan. And the 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 DDA board, that's all you're dissolving, the money is, is up to you as board members and any other board members. And you, madam supervisor, it's up to you to take and jump on board here, and 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 you wanted us to take a leap of faith with everybody who's not really. Some people who not, don't even have any skins in the game here, but here, the way you're gonna do this now. The township board's gonna have plenty of skin in the game, and they're gonna have to take and meet the bar, they're gonna have to take and 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 check it. And see what what's out there, what's available, and they're gonna have to make a, make a, make a, uh. A move to take and promote money and and continue to take and move money, and there's no reason why they can't, because the money will still be there that the township put in. The only thing you're not gonna have is LCC money, and LCC would have took and opted out if they had time, and they didn't have time. That happens all the time in government.
It does, now, make sure I'm understanding this, this, this is where I get a little confused, because I ask you to feed. that meant, you know, the TIF money you feed to the township in the DDA area. And that was something that.
Well, you asked for, you asked for, in that motion, you asked for a guarantee. I can't give, I can't, I can give you a guarantee, but I really don't think it'd be worth a heck of a lot.
All right. Well, yeah, it would be worth, it would be worth a lot because we we all know.
It's my, it's my desire to do that. I'm with you one hundred percent. The forty-four thousand dollars to me, th- th- this township put into that this last year is is is, and and don't take me wrong, folks. It was a hole in the bucket. It really isn't much when you're looking at what we're we're handling here in the way of a fund balance.
That's exactly right. So this this has to be understood and make sure I'm I'm understanding it. So let me know if I'm not correct. We pay taxes. Not we, well, yes, we all play pay property tax. In the DDA area, there's a portion of that tax by the tip that's actually taken out. They capture a certain percentage.
Positive gap.
Now, they they take that capture and you, as a tax collector, you must say from this area, this DDA area, that that capture of dollars is then put into a bucket. We'll we'll use that as an example. It's put into a fund balance. Now, when you say that nothing's going to change except the board, why can't there be a guarantee then? Because all of us are paying taxes. It's just the DDA people in that district are taking and captured a certain percentage of that tax. So if I pay a thousand dollars, fifty of that goes to the DDA. Okay, so you get nine hundred and fifty dollars for the township. Fifty dollars of that goes into a DDA fund. Now, over time, that starts to grow. And over time, you develop quite a fund balance, which right now you're saying there's what? First, it was two hundred and ninety some thousand, now it's two seventy plus.
It's never been two hundred and ninety some thousand.
Okay, well, that's, our report says that, but anyway.
You don't have a report that says that because.
We'll we'll say two hundred and seventy plus.
You got two seventy thousand, probably two seventy-one if you wanna be, if you wanna be. He was one ninety-seven last year. He was seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and some this year. So do the math. I'm not good at math.
Well, neither neither am I, to be frank with you, because I have all of these financial records and it's like three hundred and some odd dollars in twenty sixteen and now we're two hundred and seventy. So anyway, what I'm trying to say is that money has grown and that money should be and could be used for whatever. And and you're professing, what you're saying is you're gonna do away with the board, but the district isn't gonna change, but there can be no guarantee. If that were the case, then if the board was in place, you would still, you would have a guarantee of dollar amounts. Now, that that's one point. Second point that I have, you know, with this, there are actually four objectives. Jason, not three. The fourth one, the fourth, the fourth objective is to do away with deterioration and be able to improve an area. That I understand. You also quit the DDA, so there isn't a lot of love lost that goes with that. There's, there's a lot of negatives on your end that go for that. Social media. There is no place for that. I happen to agree with Brian a hundred percent. There is no place on social media. But there is a place to request that people who belong to the DDA, they are asked or their request as to whether or not they wanna belong to a DDA because they're the only ones that actually and and that's so funny. That's, that's an interesting piece. They're the only ones who actually have dollars that go into that DDA area. The rest of us, myself included, pay our property tax, but I'm not captured for anything because I don't live in the DDA area. And frankly, none of you live in a DDA area. So it's really hard to understand what's going on. As for surveys, I have no use for surveys, never have and never will. Because there's only a certain number of people who actually respond to a survey. I'm for knocking on a door. That's me. That's my own personal being. You knock on a door and you ask somebody. Or you hand out something. You don't ask for a survey because most people just don't go for surveys. That's just not their their thing. The DDA area that we have, part of what the legislation wanted was to clean up the deteriorating parts. Everybody seems to be, no matter who I talk to, there seems to be this embarrassment with the mainstream. But nobody has done anything. I've been here twenty plus years and the Planning Commission with our CIPs may have completed two projects.
That's not true.
Well, sure it is. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna include police maintenance as part of a CIP. That that's a discussion that goes with somewhere else.
What about utilities, your sewer, your authority alone does hundreds of thousands of dollars of CIPs that you take and you of you take.
I don't because I'm not in, I'm not in the sewer section.
Doesn't matter. Township is guaranteed by a good faith and credit of the general fund. That's the general fund is what.
The discussion, the discussion of what is a CIP and what isn't a CIP is a whole nother ballgame. Right now, we're talking about the DDA. Any projects that have been done, when you claim the township has done it to improve our township, if if you're going to include, which again, that's another discussion we can have for a CIP. We've had the Senior Center and that was a grant that did it, and it was was Western Park. And that was started way back when and was completed. Those are projects that actually people look at from the outside of how good the township is. So for me, over the years, I have seen what DDA's do. I'm the only one sitting here in this group besides another, besides Bob and some others who've actually seen what can happen to an area of improvement. I don't know, Ryan, if you've seen it. Have you seen improvements? Do you see it Mount Pleasant? Do you see it in other areas? Uh, if you go into Delhi, they're right now doing sewer and water for areas that aren't there, but of course they have a lot more money than we have. So these projects that you keep talking about, that you keep saying are happening, somehow I don't see that as DDA spending. So what I have proposed and have worked on for months and Will's right, I've spent a lot of time trying to get people to understand with this new group coming in, this partnership that you say doesn't exist. It's the responsibility of the Board of Trustees, whether it be you, somebody in the future, somebody in the past, to work with the DDA. Now, whether somebody knocked on your door and said, hello, I'm DDA, come work with me. I don't know if that happened. Chances are that didn't happen. But that doesn't relinquish your responsibilities. Because the board works with the DDA. That's a partnership. Whether you like it or not, that is a partnership. And from that partnership comes ideas of what can happen. Right now, you're saying dissolve it, and I'm saying to you, I don't think it's time. The treasurer brought up the library. They brought up the art committee, farmer's market, library, farmer's market. I've been here and have monitored for probably ten years of what's been happening. Out of that time, we did maintain the library and we did maintain farmer's market and we're still maintaining. Have they increased? Oh, yeah. I mean, it would be very difficult to see this township without them. However, they didn't just instantly become what they did. It took a long time to grow. I'm asking for this DDA, it's gonna be a long time to grow. But part of my discussion has to be with notes that I've taken is that no one has talked to the DDA people, the ones who actually are recipients, who have their taxes captured. Their taxes don't go up or down. Nobody's taxes go up and they go up and down with improvements of what happens. Or just naturally, it'll go up. So we don't have any data and you're you're right, Jason. There is no data on what you can do because you haven't seen what could be done because the DDA hasn't really been given the chance that the farmer's market and the library has been given. And that's all that I'm asking. I am a proponent of the DDA. I'm in the minority, not only physically, but I'm in the minority when it comes to the DDA. But not necessarily because I've talked to a couple of you who, you know, there's been a contact that I've made that we've had this discussion and there is support. Now, why all of a sudden we wanna do away with it? I'm not real clear on that because the DDA deserves to have another chance. It deserves to be able to prove within this ten-year period that you're talking about to be able to say, yes, we're gonna support this. We're gonna see what happens because we did it with farmer's market and we did it with the library. But we also had a partnership that hasn't taken place. We don't have a partnership now. It's a train wreck. No question. Fred's absolutely correct. It's a train wreck. But only we as people can improve that. So that's all that I have to say. That's all that I actually wondered. Bob, go ahead. I can see you. Nope. Okay. Is there anybody else? Okay. Then the next thing on our agenda, supposed to have to find the agenda after all of that.
We still have to vote, Madam Supervisor.
Well, I thought that this is the introduction and this is the first reading. I think we did do that and it will be back June. But, okay. Twenty-first. All right. So it's coming back June twenty-first.
No, we have to vote on the first reading now and then on a second reading again, and it has to pass two readings in order for it to.
Yes, that's correct. And that's what I'm, you're right, the voting hasn't been done yet, but it will come back the twenty-first.
We have to vote tonight. There's a motion and a second on the floor to vote tonight on the first reading.
And the, but in order for it to be completed, you have to come back in two weeks to complete that.
That's right. You have to vote tonight and in two weeks.
And in two weeks. That's correct. Yes, you and I are on the same page. So if if that motion is, you're gonna make it, go ahead.
It's already been made.
Okay, discussion is done. We need to vote.
Okay, thank you.
Just so it's understood, it's coming back.
Ewan Spitz.
Yes.
How?
No.
Rose Crams?
Yes.
Wiswasser?
Yes.
Almarigi?
Yes.
Benzi?
Yes.
Okay. So it appears that motion passes except that it will be back the twenty-first for the final reading. Is that understood?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, cool. All right. Now, do we go on to new business? For items in introduction, there is none. But it's still on our agenda. Items for action, none. But it's on the agenda. All right, Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Um, so we have been a busy group. Um, in late, um, COVID restrictions are changing um for June and then they will be changing for July. It is my understanding that the Clinton County Board of Commissioners will most likely um not um extend the state of emergency so that um electronic meetings can continue to be held. If that is the case, our first meeting in July will be an in-person meeting in the Board of Trustees room. But I will be sure to communicate that with you all on the last Tuesday of the month, which is when the Commission, Clinton County Board of Commissioners meets.
Right.
And that will be, let me just get you a date, um, Tuesday, June twenty-ninth. So um and the uh packet would be prepared and distributed um I, it looks like on the first of July. So um you will have adequate notice um if we are to meet in person. So I just wanna be clear about that. We'll do everything we can to publicize that for not only the board members, but for the public. In addition to that, um, we have been working with rentals and a lot of use of our buildings that hasn't been allowed to happen. Um, so it's been very busy as people, you know, wanna hold graduation parties and and wedding showers and baby showers and things of that nature. Um, we've been dealing with that. We are also working towards the opening of the Senior um Center. Hopefully mid-July, if that's possible. My staff is currently working on policies and procedures that will um hope, we hope to keep people safe. Um, it will include sanitizing, whatever other restrictions and rules that we need to have to keep everybody safe at that time. So we are hoping um working through that process, which is um very tedious, but when it comes to keeping people safe is very worth it. Um, our Bath Township family um lost um the husband of one of our employees. And that was a devastating shock to all of us. We lost former um Police Officer Mike Wilson, who is the um husband of our Deputy Treasurer, Jennifer Wilson. Um, this family has pulled together and supported her um nonstop and I am shocked that she's back to work, but she is back to work and she um seems to be doing as well as can be expected at this time. And we continue to pledge our support to her and her family as she moves through this difficult time. Um, I don't, I I have the words to express um the hurt that everyone has experienced and and felt for her. Um, she is a very special person on our staff and we just, we mourn with her and um we'll try to support her the best we can. Um, that is all I have for this time. If you have questions, I am um open to those questions and would be happy to answer them for you.
I have one question.
Go ahead, please.
Usual. Yeah, you know that. Um, you're talking about July before we can meet in person.
Correct.
Now, I've been meeting at different places in person and it doesn't seem to be an issue. So for here, there apparently seems to be an issue with it. Help me out on what the difference is.
So when I proposed to you all back um earlier this year, your your decision to me was that you wanted to continue to meet virtually as long as there was a local state of emergency at the county level. So that is what I have been monitoring is Clinton County Board of Commissioners' state of emergency.
Okay, got it. So if they don't have a state of emergency, then we don't.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. Because it's county people that are meeting. In fact, I go to one tomorrow, but and in March, our Board of Review met in person. So I'm just, as long as I understand, that's the county that's setting, that's pushing, driving that train.
Yes, this board said if the county extends that state of emergency, you wanted to meet virtually.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, Fred, you still there? Okay, you wanted to finish. I'm sorry I had to cut you off.
Um, okay, Fred, I'll get to you in a second. Just let me say my spiel quick. Um, if anyone would like to make a public statement at this time, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine or raising your physical hand if your video is turned on or by using the raise hand function. Uh, Fred, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, hey, I'm not a, not a big deal here. Um, I can't see myself. This is kinda weird.
You look quite nice. So let it go with that.
Well, thank you.
You red shirt. You look, you're like, okay.
Um, anyway, I I, here I am. I really wanna say uh thank you to the Board of Trustees members and Mr. Wiswasser that uh explained things much more for the DDA. I think that uh is really important because like you had said before, um, I wasn't sure that both sides kinda really understood each other. I I appreciate you guys um putting that out there. It it's reasonable. It makes sense. Mr. White, I appreciate your passion as well. And I mean, I I I don't have a, I don't have a horse in this race other than the township, what's best for the township. So uh I wanna say thanks for that. Um, I also wanna say great for A and D Repair. Awesome for you guys to give them some uh some access, you know. I'm 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 also the primary owner of Professional Metal Works. Uh, we're moving. Uh, if you guys would have come forward with some sewer plans a few years ago, we'd still be here for a. If you guys would have come forward with some sewer plans a few years ago, we'd still be here for a few years. We're doing about twelve million bucks a year and we spent some pretty good coin on a new building we're supposed to move into. Oh, October, December, we're gonna close in September. So a little disappointment in the township for not paying a damn thing of attention to helping me grow my business. But good for A and D and that's fantastic. The meeting is still, in my opinion, somewhat of a train wreck. I, I don't think Zoom is the, is the issue, I think Zoom in, in a lot of cases helps. People join the meeting, I wish there was more attendance to our meetings. You've seen that there's twenty-five people on here, not ten or whatever, so all I want to say beyond that is we all have the same goal and we, and we know that, it's what's best for our township and what's best for our people and so on and so forth. So, gosh, we all have the same goal, let's please keep that in mind as we move forward and try to work with each other more and more. So thanks everybody, have a great night.
Thanks Fred.
Sorry Supervisor, go ahead.
No Taylor, I was just, Joe had your hand up, is that?
I got a text during the message.
Okay.
During the meeting, Trump, for Taylor, be conscious of the star nine dial-ins.
Yes, if anyone has their hand raised, I, I address them. During the first public comment, anyone that had their hand raised was giving the opportunity.
Being recognized, so I just wanted to pass that on to you, you do a great job.
Okay, I appreciate that. Phone number ending in eight-three-zero, you can unmute by dialing star six.
I'm assuming you can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is Rick Curtis, first of all, I'm very, very disappointed, upset and angry that the first public comment, when I wanted to share some pertinent information as the outgoing chair of the DDA, I was not recognized, I hit star nine four times at least and they just blocked me out and didn't allow me to speak. That's wrong, it's absolutely wrong. I don't know how you can run a meeting like that if your people that are doing the moderating are incompetent to do this and you need someone that can do this, that can handle it correctly. Second of all, I would like to correct the record on quite a number of things. First of all, Jason, you had a lot to say about the DDA. Unfortunately, the only thing that you contributed to while you were on the DDA was to try to slow everything down and stop us and now you're complaining that they didn't get anything done. You eventually quit, you just quit. You thought that would be the more effective way to handle things is I'll just quit, okay. You've got no credibility here, you absolutely have none. Furthermore, Mr. Fueens Bliss, I do appreciate you texting me back and letting me know that you would contact them so that you could tell Marie Howe that I didn't get to make any of these pertinent comments before the vote, which is totally unacceptable. But you, I suggested to you during one of those texts that you could suggest to Marie Howe or call Committee of the Whole, that way the public would be allowed to speak during that conversation and I could have gotten those comments in before you decided to vote. But you chose to just fluff that off. You know, it's, it's ridiculous. It's absolutely ridiculous. Now Steve, one of the things I'm sure you can admit to is that the DDA had very few funds for their first eight years in operation. And one of the things that Will White had mentioned to you on several occasions and my understanding from him, and I haven't heard your side of this, was that he didn't get anywhere. And that was to recheck the TIF fund. When I became, when I was appointed in two thousand uh, se- two thousand seventeen, at the first meeting, they voted and made me the chair. The first thing that I did was I went to Steve and he was very cooperative and he went to the county and he got the TIF fund taken care of and straightened out. So that the DDA was getting the funds that they're supposed to have in order to conduct business in this township. In order to make some of the improvements, they couldn't do anything with eight thousand or twelve thousand a year. But when, when they started realizing forty-four thousand, fifty-six thousand, then they quickly went on and marched to figure out what are we going to do because now we can make some real meaningful improvements. That's when Jack Phillips decided that he wasn't going to, unfortunately, Jason, you lied about this, he wasn't going to appoint membership. I ran out and I recruited qualified members constantly for this DDA. And just to remind everybody out, who's out there watching this meeting, the DDA chair nor any of the members get paid a nickel. They're doing this for the love of their community, period. There is no personal benefit for any of them, other than the fact that they'll make the town look better, it won't be deteriorating anymore. That's what the DDA is supposed to do. So I went out in my spare time, which I don't have a lot of, and I recruited membership for Jack. He told me he was going to appoint some of them. He decided to appoint Chris Hagerman to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. We didn't have enough members to form a quorum and he was going to do that. And Chris Hagerman was someone that I got in contact with because I knew he'd be good on a DDA. He spoke here tonight, he spoke very eloquently. He's an excellent person, when there was an opening, I decided to nominate him as vice chair and he has been the vice chair for a while. I think he'd probably be an excellent chair. The only other person that I see on that particular board, since I'm stepping down, that could probably chair that meeting and do a real good job would be Bob Howe. He's got a lot of experience with DDAs, of which I didn't. I was the one who brought the idea back to the Township Board of a DDA because I had never heard of him before. I'd seen signs in little towns that I was out in. But I was at a seminar for some trustee training and I was telling some of the other trustees from other townships, the, the problems that we were having were downtown deteriorating. They told me you need to look into Downtown Development Authority. So I changed a few of my classes during that three-day weekend and I did some studying on it and I still didn't know very much, to be honest with you, but it was worth checking into and I did. And I brought it back and it took some selling to the other board members, but they decided it was a good idea. Unfortunately, it started going in the wrong direction from the beginning because all they wanted to do is have a tea and crumpet party, thank you so much Paula Clark. And just one more thing that she could fill up her schedule with so that she wouldn't be around sitting by herself. And all they did during that time, Jason, you are correct about this, they bought Christmas lights. I never felt that that was a proper expenditure for DDA until we moved the Christmas lights down to Cousins Park and it made the top of the trees look a little bit bare. So I did vote yes in favor of additional Christmas lights so that the, the park would look real nice during that time. So while we're finally getting some money in our coffers so that we can make some meaningful changes, we did do a few little things, we did cut down trees, we did blacktop the parking area downtown, we did stripe the lines. As far as the community garden, believe it or not, that was held at a meeting of the DDA that was held for some reason at Joe's Diner. And I was named by Paula Clark as one of, one of the committee members on that official committee. And then Paula Clark and Jeff Garrity got together, they didn't like that fact, so they just pretended that it didn't exist until we just gave up. So basically, that is a DDA project. But Will White, Sidney Crook, myself and Earl Watt took it over. I haven't been active in it in a couple of years, I just don't have the time. I'm raising two grandkids, I've got a business to run and still trying to keep my eye on the township. So Steve, you did a good job getting our TIF up where it belongs. Why give ninety thousand of it back to LCC or whomever? There's no reason for us to do that. Why not, you guys for several weeks have been hounding Marie Howe for DDA appointments. She comes up with DDA appointments, you don't second it at all. You had the option to divide the question and take a vote and vote who you were in favor of and vote no on who you were against, but you didn't do that. Instead, you just didn't make a vote and now you want to dissolve the DDA because Marie Howe didn't make appointments and nothing's getting done. Sure doesn't make much sense to me. The other thing that I really am disheartened about, Steve, you know you could have direct your attorney, directed your attorneys. You, you, you guys are all upset about asking, Marie Howe asking you for a leaf of paper for these committee members. If they don't do a good job, don't reappoint them. So now you expect us as citizens to take a leaf, leap of faith that you will spend that money in the DDA district. You don't, Steve, I'll take your word for it, I think you will, but I think if something else comes up and you need to balance the budget somewhere else, you don't have to because it's not in the ordinance. So why not put it in the ordinance? Second of all, why not fix what you have? You guys, you know, Jason, you talk about Facebook, you're the one that goes on there under an assumed name and starts badgering me and telling me what a poor leader I was. You know what, I've got wide shoulders and I can take that. And I'll take full responsibility, full responsibility for the failure of the DDA as long as everyone know the facts and as long as they know what happened. Then they run, Jack didn't appoint members so we could, didn't have enough to make a quorum so we couldn't put together a meeting to even put together vouchers to pay the contractor that we hired to fix Ja- James Cousins Park. I'm not about to tell somebody that they've got to go ahead when there's no way that I can get a voucher approved because Jack refused to appoint members until after the election, he decided to allow Marie to do that. Second of all, COVID hit and yes, people were out working, but we weren't doing any social gathering during that time. I stay home, I've got a heart condition, I, there was no way I was going outside without a mask on and there was no way I was going into a crowd. I can't find myself, I can't, I can't stand the idea of my ten and twelve-year-old grandkids who rely on me suddenly waking up one day and they don't have a grandfather. So I did the right thing and I'm not a bit sorry for it. But finally, thank God there's a second reading for this thing. Now that you have some of the facts straightened out and now that you understand, give the DDA a chance, I'll take all the blame. It's all my fault. The, the DDA has been a failure for the last four years, if that's the way you want to play it, go ahead, I don't care. It doesn't matter, but you've got competent people in there and you're slapping me in the face and you're slapping everybody else in the face about this. Everybody who's worked their tails off. Everybody has worked their tails off trying to do something with this DDA. Their one goal is to improve Bath. The other thing that really obsessed me is I was responding to Ryan Fueens Bliss Facebook page and pointing out some of the things that he said that were incorrect and he comes back at me publicly with this isn't about you, why do you make everything all about you? I never said anything about myself one time in that. What I said was several of us worked in the hot sun to make this happen. I, before there was a DDA, I slaved in the hot sun on that sidewalk, Marie Howe was there helping me. And so was Leon Peller of all people and Earl Watt, building those retaining walls and making sure that we could have a sidewalk in there. And we didn't get paid anything for that, but I got to tell you, tears were running down my cheeks when I saw a couple little sisters walking down that sidewalk, skipping hand in hand down the sidewalk. The other thing that I want, my one last, and I'm doing a lot of complaining here, but what makes you think, any of you, and any of you people out there listening tonight, what makes you think that the township is going to put money into the DDA? They never have, they had all kinds of time, if they could have done it, we wouldn't have needed a DDA to begin with. There is no way, the, the only things that I've ever seen happen was the bathrooms at Wisswasser Park, which by the way, I bid bathrooms that were eight feet longer, eight feet wider and fifteen thousand dollars less. But it's my opinion, I wish I could prove it, but I believe that your superintendent at the time got a kickback. The other thing I saw him do was they gave a pavilion down by the beach to a friend of theirs. He did a great job, it's a beautiful pavilion, but then they hired somebody else to build a flower box that I know for a fact, at that time I priced it at, lumber's higher now than it was then. That would have cost four hundred and fifty dollars to build, I would have loved a job like that for a thousand. You never took bids on it and they charged him ten thousand dollars, our township paid for that. And if you're not willing to get on, get on board and investigate this stuff, you're just, you're just as complicit, complicit as anybody else is. And if you want to sit there and keep your heads bobbling and let these young kids screw around with this stuff, then my two friends Joe and Al, go ahead and do that. I'm not very happy with you that you haven't had the opportunity, you haven't taken the opportunity to let them see what's going on. I also make, I believe that this, that this vote was in violation of the Open Meetings Act because you couldn't hear any of this stuff and it would have been much more pleasant to hear it in the first comment, I guarantee you that. And I know Marie, I'm running late, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I know I've probably gone over my total six minutes, but this is absolutely ridiculous. If you guys don't have faith in yourselves, that you can't appoint members to make that DDA work, then you don't belong sitting in those seats. Thank you, do you have a question for me Marie?
No question, just trying to tell you your time's, wrap it up, because it's.
I think I'm well over time, thank you for, thank you for indulging me.
Yep, I appreciate it, okay Taylor, is there somebody else?
Yes, Galaxy S nine, you can go ahead.
Alright, thank you, can you hear me Taylor?
Yes, okay.
Okay, this is Jack Phillips. So certainly I've listened to the debates over the DDA. I have a couple of comments, first of all, let me comment and say, I really appreciate Mr. Rick Curtis taking full responsibility for the failure of the DDA because he was certainly part of that failure. And secondly, I'd like to say to Jason who looks closely at data analysis because that's part of his job at Michigan State University, is what a wonderful job that you did showing the specifics and the numbers and the percentages of what was captured and what was spent. Next, I'd like to say, for anybody that wishes to criticize Treasurer Wisswasser for the job he's done trying to keep the DDA stood up, he is the one that discovered the capture wasn't enough, that brought that information directly to Mr. Rick Curtis so that the capture could be greater and the capture increased over a number of years. He is the one that suggested how to make this better through the participation of expenditures of this money. I met with him actually at one time and came up with a project, which was a sidewalk project, which I met with and laid before the DDA and of course, that didn't get accomplished, as many of the projects didn't. So I am not about to sit by and listen to anybody criticize Treasurer Wisswasser for not doing his job and for not, for somehow underhandedly trying to undermine the DDA, which is a complete and utter lie and I will not tolerate. Lastly, I would just like to say to Mr. Ryan Fueens Bliss, who has been there since the onset of the DDA, he very accurately described how it came about, what the process was and what their intention was to fulfill their obligations of the DDA, which they had not done. And so I would like to congratulate all the board members that have voted and will continue to vote to dissolve this DDA because it is not working and I think the Township Board can do a better job at it. And that's all I'd like to say, thank you very much.
Thank you Jack, is there anybody else, Taylor?
Uh, well, you can go ahead.
Uh, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted. Yep.
Okay.
Well, first, I appreciate the long discussion, but there was a lot of misinformation and the vote was unfounded in fact. Several people said they wanted to know more about the DDA before the board took any actions. That is very important. You represent the people. You haven't let them know what you're doing. The hundred and sixty seven property owners have not been notified. So how can the board make an informed decision without any input, without any facts or figures other than whatever you hear in the, in your ears? I didn't see a financial analysis. You know, you're, you're keeping us in the dark here. And, and, uh, I know, I know, uh, Steve's, you know, I have to apologize if someone misinterpreted my earlier comments. Uh, I don't, uh, I'm not accusing anyone of ever anything, but I do need to know what the heck is going on down by the freeway. There's a reason they call that food court. How many fast food restaurants are we going to get put in there? How soon is the Village Diner in, uh, Main Street going to go out of business because nobody comes down here anymore? What's your plan for that? You don't have one. The DDA has a plan. And as, uh, as, uh, former Chair Curtis pointed out, they haven't been allowed to do it. Steve, or I mean, uh, Supervisor Snyder, when it started out, he was very supportive of DDAs, as was the whole board. When he passed away, it was taken over by Supervisor, uh, the next Supervisor, she was not supportive. And the supervisors in the board, ever since then, have actually worked against the DDA, have tried to make it fail. So it's no wonder it hasn't accomplished most of its stuff. But you know what? DDAs don't accomplish most of their stuff until the second half of their existence because if you look at the plan, it's a twenty year plan, right in the middle, ten years. Phase three, you've got to spend, uh, almost a million dollars to fix up Webster Road, put in new streetlights and sidewalks from the freeway all the way to Slate Road. Where are the township plans to pay for that? Don't have any. Oh, Turner says, well, we can set this aside, but I can't give you any guarantee because the next board can drop your hands. And as Mr. Curtis pointed out, the township board has not done anything in fifty years to fix Main Street. I live here. I walk to work and back and forth every day on Main Street. I know my neighbors. I speak to people walking down the street, almost get hit by cars because they're walking in the street because the free, the street sidewalks are not, uh, uh, not good enough. I almost got hit by a car myself riding my bike because the street light was out. And they're a hundred yards apart. It's dark in between.
Will, you're gonna have to wrap it up because.
All right. Well, I'm calling a point of personal privilege.
Okay.
Madam Chair, because as one of the original board members, worked on that board for three years.
I get it.
One of the few people who is a business owner and resident in the district, lives and works here every day, unlike any of you. I never see any of you down here. I didn't see you for the sidewalk cleanup project. So I have a very, and, and not to mention the fact that I've studied DDAs for twenty years as a member of the Michigan Downtown Association. So I have a very different and very, um, informed, um, perspective. So anyway, let me try and finish up.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, this is your second time.
Okay.
Okay.
But as, as Mr. Curtis, the people that started this and worked on it for ten years are really upset. Last couple of these said, oh, I haven't heard. How do we know it's the will of the people? Because we're telling you. And Ryan brings up these, uh, Facebook posts from people from out of town that don't deliver. Those are meaningless. You're just, you're, you're, you're clouding the water here. And, and you know, I, I'd like to see the figures. What are the figures? How many millions of future tax dollars are we giving away? I want to see the dollars because it's not just what we've collected in ten years. It's the future tax increment financing. You're talking millions of dollars that you're throwing away because on a whim, because well, I think I can do better. Well, I think the seventy five people that came before you had a good plan and I think you, because they were not allowed to follow the plan, two years the DDA hasn't been able to meet. And you say they don't have anything to do. Then Mr. Amerigi has a gall to say, oh, it's become a political issue. Well, you made it a political issue. You're the ones trying to dissolve the DDA. The DDA didn't come to say to you, hey, we want to get dissolved. No, you guys brought it up. You made it a political issue. And in fact, you try, well, I.
Hang in there, Ann. All right, Will, you're.
By the way, yeah, well.
Your privilege, your personal privilege is only good for a certain time, not a second.
One more point, the, the, uh,
Make it quick.
Farmers market that, um, Treasurer Wisswasser says is self-sufficient, not true. The township subsidizes them by twelve thousand dollars a year.
You're.
Three dollars for every customer they've had the last two years. And if you look at DeWitt, their farmer's market is run by the DDA. And so is the one in Traverse City and a lot of other places. DDAs are good. Over four hundred of them in the state will tell you that. And if you study them, you'll know that. So it, it, in, in closing, I just want to say the actions of this board were, were, uh, reprehensible. No one has spoken against the DDA but a couple of you guys. And ignoring the voice of the people, scrapping a twelve, twenty year plan with nothing replacement, that's simply bad governance. It's the most irresponsible thing I've seen any board do in my forty five years here. And thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you. Ann, I am so sorry. I skipped over you and I didn't mean to. So go ahead. Finally, did you have something you wanted to say?
I, I did.
Okay.
Um, I started watching the board um, after the election fiasco, which many of you don't think was a fiasco, but it really was. Um, and I'm learning a lot. And I'm ashamed, frankly. Um, a few of you especially, you know who you are. And I just want to let you know that the sixty one year old grandmother is not going to back down. She's very, very interested in what her township is doing and what the people on the board are doing. And I will continue to write emails. I will continue to call you out. I am so excited that you're going to be back in person because I promise you, I will be at every meeting that you have. Um, I will be in the front row. So I just want to let you know that because I, you know, I don't, I don't, I'm wondering what a few of you are afraid of, what you think I can do. Um, I promise you, I won't vote for you. Um, but I really feel that the rest of Bath Township really needs to pay attention to what the board is doing.
That's true.
And I am going to continue to pay attention.
Um, okay.
And I'm in jeopardy tonight. So, you know, that, that, but I, I just want to let you know that and thank you for listening and I hope that the board meetings will become more civil, um, in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Chris, you have a little hand up there. Is that?
Chris, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay.
Hello. Hi, thanks again. Appreciate it. Um, I'd just like to reiterate, uh, reiterate with the, uh, Recode the Tax Increment Finance Act specifically states, uh, one twenty-five dot four two three zero one dissolution of the authority, section two thirty subsection one, an authority which has completed its purposes uh, for which it was organized shall be dissolved. Um, again, it hasn't, it hasn't completed its purposes. Um, I, I agree with quite, quite a, with quite a few of the things that everybody has added and the, the social media thing is, is absurd. Shame on anyone who did what they did. Um, but, uh, let, let's just look at this for what it is. Uh, the DDA, whether it's there or not, let's just have somebody that's going to actually do something. I grew up here. My, my roots grow deeper than probably all of yours. Um, I'm raising my family here, all that stuff. Um, I got on the board because it's important to me to, to revitalize that area. Will's been here for twenty years, whatever he said. He hasn't seen a whole lot change. I grew up here. I haven't seen a whole lot change. I just want change. Uh, when I was working on it, on the few months that I was able actually to get a meeting together and do stuff, um, we had so much going. We, we worked on the lilacs that were pushed off by Brian Shorkey. I had those set up to get put in, but we couldn't vote on it to have it done. Um, all these things that, that we had in the, had ready to, to, to get going. A, got pushed off by the election, then B, got pushed off by COVID. Look, we're adults. Let's act like adults. Let's, let's do something great for this community. That's really what this comes down to and, and the bickering for Christ sakes. Um, I want to be a part of this community. I want to be a part of the change in this community and, and, uh, I want my kids to see, uh, how great this can be. So uh, let's make a decision that's, that's going to work for everybody. And, and quite frankly, I, I don't think dissolving the DDA and, and, uh, uh, getting rid of it i- is really the answer. Uh, the board has enough on their plate to deal with. Um, I think having a specific non-paid uh, group of people to come together, make decisions and, uh, really work for it, uh, to make the change. I personally on the museum committee as well and I, uh, I made way with them trying to get them to make the change. They're, they're not a group of people that like to make change. It, it's hard for them to work on those huge trees that could eventually destroy the cupolo. Boy, that's a hard change for them to make. Um, and someone in the township needs a voice with them. That's the reason why I got on there is because I was approached as someone with a voice to talk to museum committee. Um, so do what you will. Um, but I say leave it, give us a shot. Uh, it comes down to leadership in there. Um, I'd love to be a part of that leadership. I know I can make a difference in there and I know I can make a change if given the opportunity. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Chris. Taylor, is there anybody else?
If anyone else would like to make a public statement at this time, you can raise your hand.
Okay.
I don't see anyone additional.
Okay. Thanks, Taylor. Appreciate the check. All right. It looks like board member comments is the next. So is anybody going to lead us off?
Start, Marie.
Whoop. Geez, you guys are competing. That's pretty good.
Well, you, you forgot me the last time. So I'll start right off.
There you go.
Something upfront. But I want to thank everybody that commented tonight. I think they had a good discussion.
Yep.
I realize not everybody thinks the same. Thank you.
There you go. That's it. All right. Go ahead, trustee Bliss. You're going up. I was told this Feedwood Bliss trustee. So there you go.
Thanks. Uh, I agree with Steve. It, it's great to have people engaged. Whether you think we're hearing you or not, we, we hear you. We just may not agree. But let me assure you that we, we hear you. We've got to find a better way to structure these meetings. We've heard it from the public overwhelmingly tonight. We have to understand and agree on a process by which we're going to operate. When to make motions, how to make motions, seconding and voting. That stuff, we were elected in November. We should be far beyond by now. We have to enforce the three minute rule for everyone, not just individual people. It is in the board rules. We have agreed to that. Everybody gets three minutes to begin and everybody gets three minutes to the end, whether we like or don't like what they're saying. We can't pick and choose who gets more time. I, I don't know if all board members realize, but we're connected to microphones. So any comments under your breath aren't actually under your breath. Everyone.
Exactly right.
That's a great example. Uh, everyone can hear you and it is perceived as rude and it's interrupting. So it's, it's helpful if people could just keep quiet until it's their turn. And while I find it funny and cute when people hold up signs and we can all laugh about it, eventually that could turn into something that isn't so funny or cute. So we need to, we need to keep some decorum. We need to move forward together. We have to agree on the rules and keep those rules together. And if we don't like the rules, we all have the ability to introduce changes to those rules.
Okay, who's next? Al, go ahead.
I have nothing.
Okay. I don't know. Joe, you got anything?
Well, it's been a pretty serious night. Otherwise I'd tell you, give you forewarning that after sixteen months, we're going to let Al out of the basement over here.
Well, that'd be nice. He's probably very happy.
It's been a long time, but Ryan wants me to let him out.
I'm sure he does. I'm sure he does. All right, Jason, looks like you're.
Uh, thank you, everyone. Uh, it was a productive meeting. A little bit painful, but, uh, we got through some important things. Uh, I really appreciate the community's um, passionate, uh, input on this process.
Did I miss somebody? I don't want to miss anybody. One, two, three, four. Steve was five. Okay, so I'll be the last one. I do have to agree with Treasurer. Discussion sometimes is painful, but that's the point of discussion. Is somewhere, someplace in that discussion, you end up having a product. So it's greatly appreciated to have it. As for the train wreck that takes place that Ryan speaks of for the process, we do have the rules. If he wants to be able to solidify when we vote, when we don't vote, what we do, then I suggest he come in here and he and I can work that out. I don't know if that's, I haven't seen any of you in this office. So it's entirely up to you. However, you guys want to work it, that works for me. Um, if that's a bothersome thing, then fix it. And how you fix it is not publicly calling somebody out. It's coming in and fixing it. So that's my only comment when it comes to being able to run the board. I think you guys did a great job tonight, uh, listening. The three minute rule is really tough. I've always had a problem with that because it's really hard to formulate one's idea. If that were the case, Jason would have been cut off. There's no picking and choosing of anyone. I try really hard to make sure everyone has their say. Um, I know our rules say the three minutes and, and I appreciate that. But our rules have a lot of things that they say that aren't followed. So you know, I, I guess that's something that needs to be discussed. So if that's something that you all have an issue with, then we can call a special meeting and sit and chit chat about it, which, you know, and take notes, which is part of what that is all about. So just let me know what it is that you want and how you want it to work. Um, and I'd be more than willing to listen, more than willing. Yes, Ryan.
I just want to make it clear. We have a set, agreed upon set of rules. It shouldn't take any of us physically coming in to kowtow to you. It, they're set. We've agreed on them. So it, we, we have to agree to enforce them. Otherwise it, it does become anarchy.
Oh. And in your rules that you wrote, there's a procedure. Tonight, we didn't necessarily follow it. So, you know, with the agenda, so. So, you know, with the agenda, so.
If you would like us to, there is none in each item where there is none. I completely support you, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting.
Because that's what we have. And, and I understand that. So. Good, as far as I'm concerned, kudos to you for at least it's saying, yes, that needs to be fixed, and it does need to be fixed. But what I'm saying is that you're the one who mentioned that. Obviously, we don't follow the rules as according to what you want. So my comment is.
It's not according to what I want.
It's according to.
Be clear, this isn't what I want. There's established rules that the board has passed. I just.
I have them. I have them.
I just want people to know, when you reframe this as what I want, it's not what I want. If we want to change them, we should change them. But if we can't agree what rules we're operating under, how do we make decisions? And this is what leaves us open to lawsuits. This is where people can say they didn't make a motion. They didn't second them. They didn't follow what they were supposed to do. And the judge will look at our rules and say, you all have agreed to these rules.
Aren't, wait, wait, wait.
Are invalidated because you're not following your own rules.
You're the one, you're the one.
Is that we agree on a set of rules. They're already in place.
You're the one who stated to me township gets sued all the time. So what? So suing is not the issue. What the issue is, is what it is that you want.
I just brought up. It's my issue. I get to define my issue.
Okay.
That's what I'm concerned. I'm concerned that our ordinance is our things will be overturned because we're not following our own rules.
And I'm, oh, I suggest you read your own rules so that.
I read them. I read them twice. I read them this morning.
Well, then read them again.
I will read them again. If you'd like to point out a specific section that you'd like to hold me accountable to, I'm happy to understand that.
No, that's an email. I will be so happy when we can meet in person, where we can sit and talk in person. I think that's going to make a huge difference.
That's great. Just so you know, I'm willing to take a phone call, a virtual call. I'm willing to.
So am I.
That without being.
So am I. I'm always here. Absolutely. Not an issue.
If you want to talk to me, call me. I don't understand what we're arguing about.
We're not arguing. If you want to talk to me.
It feels like we're arguing.
Well, I'm sorry you feel like that. It's kind of a difference of who's coming to who, which really doesn't make any difference.
We can't even agree when we're arguing. Got it.
Well, that's, that's your problem, not mine.
It's all my problem, apparently.
Yeah, apparently, all I'm saying.
I wish I knew half of what you pretend to know.
Oh, God, yes, we do. Yes, Joe. Are we ready to adjourn?
Seven.
May adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second? Let's vote on her.
Seventy four years old, Max, like this.
It moves out?
Yeah. Call it.
Yeah, go ahead. If you fall asleep.
Al.
Yes.
Rosecrans.
Yes.
Wisswasser.
Yes.
Omarigi.
Yes.
Benzi.
Yes.
Fuen's Bliss.
And please.
Oh, please. It's anonymous. So.
It's unanimous.
Anonymous, not anonymous. It's unanimous. Good laugh. They'll send you on your way home. Take care. Thank you.
Ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.